So, good morning, everybody. It's Monday, May 28th. Now, we have a long, busy day here with lots going on. We're going to start off, actually, today with a public consultation and public hearings. So, we're going to start with the consultation. We're going to call that to order and go to our deputy director of corporate administration to read aloud the notice of the consultation.
Good morning. Notice has been given that a public consultation will be held at this time in these chambers to hear from anyone who feels they may be affected by the bylaw amendments proposed for 816-107th Avenue. The bylaw amendments are an amendment to the official community plan to re-designate the property from residential to service commercial and a zoning amendment bylaw for the same property to change the zoning from RM2 residential medium density multiple family to C3 commercial highway zone.
Okay, thank you. And you'll notice under the correspondence that there were three letters under 3-1 that were received regarding this, but I know council has all those, but we'll look to the gallery then and call for comments if need. Calling a second time. Are you wishing to speak, sir?
No.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. This is the opportunity, if you wanted to, under the consultation. So, we'll call a third time then if somebody wishes to speak. Mr. Eggersen?
The company is a very successful company. The quarters are occupied right now are far too small. They need greater space.
Thank you. Okay, so seeing no other comments at this time, we will close the public consultation session. With that, we will call to order the public hearing session. Again, go to the deputy to read aloud the notice.
Okay, so in these instances, we do do a combined notice. Notice has been given that a public hearing will be held at this time in these chambers to hear from persons affected by the proposed zoning amendments to 816-107th Avenue. The proposal is to change the zoning from RM2 residential medium density multiple family to C3 commercial highway zone. And the same three pieces of correspondence are attached for reference.
Thank you. So, on that, again, we'll call from the gallery three times if anybody wishes to speak. Calling a second. Calling a third time. So, no one wishing to speak again at this time, so we will close the public hearing. And thank you very much, everyone. On that, we will call to order our regular meeting of city council for Monday, May 28th. Before we go to new council business, just want to welcome everybody who took time out of their busy days to come here to our meeting today. And also welcome, we have three ladies students from the Applied Business Tech at Northern High College, I believe, who are watching us today, and they're going to take notes and see how this functions. So, welcome. And we'll start with new and council business. We have one item there, 2-1, Councilor Schuman, I believe. You've submitted that. Thank you very much. Did you wish to speak to it?
I don't. I just submitted it so that everybody could see what I was up to in Canlip at the city's Fit for Children conference. And I have to say, the next time, it would be great if somebody else might want to go to it and hear all the important things that I heard. This is basically for your information. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything else under -- Councilor McFadden?
Just a couple of things, your worship. Last week, I think it was last week, I took part in the Water Week celebrations along with some city staff, and we toured around to some of the public schools, and it was very well put together and very well received. And then, just one other item. I had a conversation late last week with a property owner from the downtown area on 102nd that has a concern about water flowing under their property. And I have not time to really look into it, but I have had a brief chat with staff, and I'll do that further, and they can look into it. I think there's some springs, underground springs downtown that is probably the cause, but I'll refer it further to staff. Thank you, your worship.
Thanks. Councilor Malkinson?
I, your worship, I attended the memorial service at Charlie Lake on Saturday commemorating all the African-Americans and regular American soldiers who sacrificed their lives to build the Alaska Highway. It was a good ceremony, and I got to meet the bishop from Alaska. Very nice guy. The library board has been working on a new vision statement. They're trying to get one, I suppose, that's current or fits nicely with the community of today, I suppose. And they're taking a break for the summer, and they're going to get back to work on it in the fall. So, that's about it for me.
Anything further under new council business? So, on that, then, before we go into minutes, I'd like to make a motion that we're going to vary the agenda and move up to bylaws. We do have some people here, so we thought we'd vary and go straight up to 8-1 and 8-2. These are dealing with the consultation hearing that we had this morning. So, 8-1, if everybody wants to pull that up. 8-1 is the official community plan amendment bylaw 4138 for consideration of third reading and adoption. Councilor Schuman. And is it seconded by Councilor Wilbur? Is there discussion from council? No discussion? Okay, Councilor Kenny?
Sure. I've been giving this some more, definitely some more thought after the letters that were submitted and the activity with what's happening with Cal Tire. And looking at all those tires, it does look like they do need more property. And in that location, that really would impact that residential area, and there's been a lot of upgrading in the houses and really a lot of improvements in that part of the community, part of the downtown core. And I have to agree that that would impact that area. And so, I will be voting against.
Okay, okay. Councilor Schuman?
Yeah, so, I appreciate the letters that we received. I happen to think that they do need that space for their business, and I think that the current property in the state that it's in, I think this would actually be an upgrade to it. And I don't feel it's going to impact, you know, the block further down as much as what they think it's going to impact it. I mean, I think that people will be coming off of 8th Street or off of 8th Street and in there and then back out again. I don't feel it's going to be a big impact, and I'll be voting in favor.
Okay. Any other comments? Councilor McFadden?
I think Mr. Eggersen has a valid point that it's just not enough property even with the addition of this other lot. I also have a safety concern. I have been driving along 10th, and you see semis trying to get into Cal Tire off that main highway, and it bears, it's, there is a safety issue there. It's just not that safe a deal. And I quite agree, they're a good corporate citizen, and we value and appreciate them, but I just think perhaps they ought to be located in more of an industrial area. So, I'll be voting against the recommendation.
Okay. Well, it wouldn't be industrial, it would be commercial, which is actually where they are right now is zoned properly for what they're doing, so. And they are right on a highway frontage, so. Councilor Wilbur?
I agree with Councilor Schuman. It would probably be an enhancement to the property in the sense that the main complaint or tires and stuff, they would now be able to properly store them and probably would be out of sight. I don't think we can say to them, "Move. They've been there, they're viable business. They pay taxes." So, I do see it as an enhancement. There are other similar type industries on main roads in our community that work well. So, I will be voting in favor.
Yeah, thank you. And you are correct. We can't go to a business and say anything like that, so. Okay, so we'll call a question then. So, all those in favor? Opposed? And it is carried. 8-2 is the same property, and this now is for the zoning bylaw, so 4139 for third reading and adoption. Councilor Schuman, Councilor Wilbur? No further discussion? So, all those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. On that, let's go back to start of the agenda. Give everybody a second, we'll go back. We were at minutes. So, minutes 3-1, we have minutes from May 7th, May 9th, and May 11th. We have three sets of minutes for adoption. Councilor Kenny, Councilor McFadden? All those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. And is there any business arising from these? So, seeing none, we'll move into correspondence. The first correspondence is a letter from the British Columbia Society for Prevention of Cruelty to Animals. This is a request for the use of Ken Park for the annual Pause for a Cause fundraising event. Councilor Schuman?
I would move that we give permission for the BCS/BCA Southeast branch to use Ken Park for their annual Pause for a Cause fundraising event.
Seconded by Councilor Kenny. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. 5-2 is a letter from Ms. Gloria Cleve, the early learning project manager. She's requesting partnership with the South Peace Building Learning Together Society, and they're applying for an application for $25,000 for an outdoor playground equipment for the Kiwanis Early Learning Hub. Councilor Malkinson?
I move that we provide the city, we provide support in applying to the Agri Spirit Fund for an early years outdoor playground to be located beside the Kiwanis Early Learning Hub.
Seconded by Councilor Schuman. Discussion? Jim, I just have a question then to staff. My recollection, this will be the first time that we've done something like this. We've done letters of support on many occasions, but this one here is a little different. We're actually going to be, the way I read this, they want us to actually be the forefront with the applicant and actually administer the funds?
Through your worship, my understanding is that we would be the actual applicant. We would receive the funds and pay them out for the work. We've done such partnerships before, but generally when the asset was going to be on city property within a city building, this would be a tenant improvement at the Kiwanis Early Learning Hub. So, it would be different in that regard. That doesn't make it a good idea or a bad idea, it just makes it different than anything we've done before.
Sure. So, internally, though, for protocol or process, there's no issues with us? Just because we've never done it before, I just assume there's no issues with us?
Well, I would assume so, too, but we've never done it before. We'll work through any, if it's council's direction to do this, we'll work through any issue that comes up.
Okay. Any further discussion then? Okay, so all those in favor? Anyone opposed? It's carried. 5-3 is a letter from Ms. Karen Palfy, and this is regarding the Grade Grad 2012 scavenger hunt request. Councilor Malkinson?
Your worship, I'm wondering whether we should refer this to staff or not to figure out the actual cost of keeping the climbing wall open for the hours passed. I'm not sure how much it would cost.
So, before a motion, then, maybe we'll just get that information. Jim?
Through your worship, if this was a standard rental of the climbing wall with the requisite staff, it'd be about $150.
So, we'll leave, the floor is open for a motion then. Councilor Malkinson?
Your worship, I move that we provide this grad scavenger hunt group the necessary assistance to keep the climbing wall open during the hours specified in their letter.
Okay. Councilor Kenny, seconding. Any discussion?
It's going to be, oh.
Go ahead, Counselor.
It's going to be a very fun time, and I encourage all of you to participate. This Are You Smarter Than a Counselor event is going to be very, very fun. I think it's important, you know, just, what, it's, I'm enthusiastic about it, I'm sorry. It's just, it's really, really important to participate, and it's, I don't know, just to see it, you know, right up front.
Well, and, you know, unlike yourself, the rest of us, it's been quite a while since graduation, so maybe. So, Councilor Kenny and Councilor Schuman?
I like the idea of finding Duncan instead of finding Waldo.
Yeah. That's funny.
I apparently am going to be at the Pioneer Village with the Are You Smarter Than a Counselor program. I don't know if I like that idea. It has been a while since I graduated.
And my question for Duncan?
I know who I'm betting on.
My question for Duncan is, like, is there something we ought to, what should we studying for on, you know? If there's going to be a test, I need to study for it. So, what are we going to be quizzed on? What is, what are the questions going to be? I need to study. This is important stuff.
Well, we just need the answers. We just need the answers.
Through your worship, I think it's just going to be an assortment. I think there might be some municipal government questions along with some actual academic questions, so it's going to be a bit of a toss-up.
So, good luck on all of them.
Just have to study on everything.
So, thanks, all of council, as part of, partaking. I'm, as you know, I'm out of town with meetings with WestJet and others, so I won't be actually in town that week, but thanks for stepping up and helping out. It's unfortunate I'll miss it.
Looking forward to it.
We'll find it.
So, no other common sense? So, all those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. 5-4 is a letter from the University of Northern British Columbia, and this is looking for a letter of support for the establishment of an endowment, long-term funding program for the Community Development Institute. Maybe prior to a motion, then, obviously, I'll just remind everybody that at the NCLGA I did meet with some of the professors from UNBC on this program. The Community Development Institute has been around for quite some time. They're lacking a bit in funding to continue on with the program. It's been more earmarked beneficial for communities, as most of you know. So, what they've done is they've acquired the help of Mayor Stephanie Killam of McKenzie as well, who's been reaching out to all the communities. They're not looking for financial assistance, but they have an opportunity to get some corporate funds to help keep the program going in a lot of communities. Some of the communities, for instance, that have had the unfortunate situation of some mills being destroyed, some companies have stepped forward saying, "How can the Community Development Group help?" But what they're looking for is just from municipalities saying, "Are you in favor of this program continuing?" They're not looking for funds, just letters of support that they can go forward to industry with. So, that's in the most part of the background, so. Councilor Kenny?
Well, I'll move that we submit a letter of support.
Okay. Councilor Malkinson, seconding. And they did put a, kind of a template in here of some ideas for that letter, so we'll get staff to help out with that. So, any questions then? So, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? And it's carried. And 5-4 is a letter from the Aboriginal Family Services. This is a request for a partnership or sponsorship for the Second Annual Dawson Creek Competition Powwow.
What did you last year?
Last year, we wished them well. We did not give any financial assistance to this. It, under the grants policy, it didn't come forward in time and under, this is kind of similar to last year, is under the sponsorship, there's no information here. Usually with a sponsorship request that we go forward, you know, there's a new gold, platinum, silver, a certain amount of sponsorship, and then you are told what you'll get for that sponsorship. Typically, that's what happens, so. Councilor Kenny?
I'll move that we receive for information.
Thank you. So, Councilor Wilbur, seconding. Any discussion? Councilor Schuman?
I was a little bit confused by this letter, and maybe you can help me with this. So, they were going to use the, our arena, and now they're not going to use the arena because they, their Powwows costing them $132,500, and they've only raised $30,000 so far, and, like, I'm confused.
Sure. No, I believe what's happened is, last year, they did use the Memorial Arena. They had quite a successful event, and if, for those that were around last year, the organization group came forward and asked if they could have permission to park trailers and if we could put some porta-potties, and they had quite a successful event. We assisted in that regard. It's my understanding, Jim will correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding, they still plan on using the Memorial Arena. Everything's still in place for that. What they're saying, though, is, at this point, the fundraising efforts aren't where they want it to be. Thus, what they're looking for is maybe something, us to relax, maybe what we charge them from Memorial Arena. Jim, is that the gist of this?
Through your worship, I do think they're looking at alternative venues in the event that the city wouldn't provide the facility free or some such sponsorship. It may have to be reduced event if they're unable to fundraise.
So, we're providing the memorial for the not-for-profit rate for?
Yes, and it's still booked, but I'm, I know that, or I am told that they are exporing other venues in the event that they can't afford the Memorial Arena.
Okay. But yes, we are giving them the lowest rate right now, the not-for-profit rate.
And are we providing anything else in kind, Jim, that you know?
Not over and above what we would provide any renter. There's chairs and that sort of thing included in there.
Any further questions? So, right now, the motion is for information. So, okay, sorry, Councilor Malkinson?
Says that they want, well, says that they need about $102,000 to go through with this event, is that right? That's not the amount they're asking for, eh?
No. Well, and that's, I think, where the confusion was with this letter. I think what they're trying to state is, in order to go forward, they're still short in their fundraising efforts to have this event.
Could we encourage them to apply to the city's grant? Like, could we agree to waive the deadline on the city grants and encourage them to apply there?
Shall we?
Yeah, through your worship, they already did.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, they applied in September, and they didn't have the paperwork. I think it was to do with the financial statements and the budget. So, we suggested that, you know, if they wanted additional funding to come forward with sponsorship request, and that's what they have here.
So, this is a request for sponsorship?
It's, it's quite vague.
Yeah, it's very, I'm confused.
Yes. And if, for those who are, and again, this is similar to what happened last year, similar kind of request that came forward with, it was just kind of open-ended, saying, "Help us." Last year, we received for information, if I remember, but they came back and said, "Can we have permission to use the parking lot park, have porta-potties, all that," like I said, so. And we did grant that request.
Okay.
Okay, Councilor Wilbur?
I'm just wondering, would it be possible to send them a letter and just kind of affirm what we're really looking for in asking for a sponsorship? Like, I see this as an enhancement to our community, so, you know, I'd hate to see them get smaller over the years instead of grow bigger. So, I'm just wondering if maybe they're not understanding what we require to request a sponsorship, that we need those details, so we know specifically what we would be sponsoring and what we would be getting for it in a specific amount.
Okay, Councilor Malkinson?
I'd like to propose an amendment to the motion.
Right now, it's for information?
Yep, I'd like to propose that we receive the letter for information and send a letter to the Aboriginal Family Services Group outlining that we want a more specific, more specific ask.
Trying to think if that's specific enough for them. Okay.
Well, right now, the letter states their needs, right, but doesn't say exactly what they want from us.
That's, no, you're totally right. Is there a secondary for that amendment? Okay, Councilor Schuman? So, to the amendment, any discussion? So, all those in favor of the amendment? Okay, anyone opposed? Councilor McFadden? It's carried, so now the main motion, trying to be specific or accurate here. So, the main motion, then, is received for information with this letter going forward. Any other discussion on that? Okay, so all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, and it's carried.
That's settled.
It's kind of confusing.
Yeah, well, I know. So, maybe they'll come forward with something else that's a bit more specific. So, it's not quite nine o'clock yet. We have a few minutes. We'll just jump over delegations into reports, get one or two of those done. First one is report 7-1. This is report 12-090 from the chief administrative officer, and this is regarding the Site C consultation process. Councilor Kenny?
I'll move the recommendation that the report number 12-090 from the chief administrative officer regarding Site C consultation process be received for information and that council affirm its participation in the regional effort to engage the province and BC Hydro in discussion around creating a shared and lasting benefit for the area should the Site C project proceed.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor McFadden? Any discussion? Councilor Malkinson?
This is the, this is an option that doesn't, like, I saw that $50,000, $100,000. This is just an advocacy sort of a stance. It's not requiring any funds.
That's correct. Jim?
Actually, your worship, it is requiring funds, but the regional districts are providing them.
Yeah, not us.
I think the regional district budget is $50,000 this year for this activity.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions? Councilor Kenny?
Yeah, I, like, after reading what our chief administrative officer had reported on, and the fact that we had turned down those funds from BC Hydro to participate in a deeper consultation two years ago, it is a little late. But I could understand that Fort St. John is being so directly impacted by Site C. We are going to feel impacts, but not to the degree that Fort St. John is. And so, seeing what, you know, what they've been going through, that is definitely the right direction for him. Might be a little overkill for us, though, and so, I believe that this is, this is the best way to go.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you. Any other comments? So, all those in favor then? Anyone opposed? It's carried. 7-2 is report 12-086 from the deputy director of corporate administration. This is regarding the Mile Zero Park Society director appointments. Councilor Wilbur?
I'd like to make the motion that report number 12-086 from the deputy director of corporate administration regarding Mile Zero Park Society director appointments be received, and further that Tim Bennett be appointed as the City of Dawson Creek's representative to the South Peace Mile Zero Park Society.
Seconded by Councilor McFadden? Any comments? Just thanks to Mr. Bennett for putting his name forward and being willing to step, step up and sit on the board and volunteer.
And I just want to say thank you, too, to Mr. Pettit for realizing very quickly that he wasn't going to be able to commit the time and allowing us to appoint somebody else.
Good. Thank you for that. Okay, so all those in favor? Anyone opposed? It's carried. Do one more here. 7-3 is report 12-095 from the deputy director of corporate administration. This is regarding our arena advertising policy, some housekeeping. Councilor Kenny?
I'll move the recommendation that report number 12-095 from the deputy director of corporate administration regarding the arena advertising policy be received, and further that the amended City of Dawson Creek arena advertising policy be approved as presented.
Okay, thank you. Seconded by Councilor Wilbur? Any comments? Councilor Malkinson?
I was wondering what the, what council thought of the removal of the option to apply for council for a reduction in fees. I don't know if somebody has a problem with the fees that we're charging. I don't, I wouldn't mind hearing it. These are all, well, I suppose it'll be reflected in the vote in a couple of seconds, but I was just wondering.
So, can you give me a bit more information where you're going with that, please?
Yeah, it seems like, well, it says, you know, removal of the option to apply for council for a reduction in fees for the advertising at the arena. And that seems like we're sort of cutting off a avenue of communication to council, it seems. No?
Okay, Jim?
Through your worship, the existing policy actually has that option as part of the policy. The recommendation here is that someone wishing a waiver of the policy would have to apply for a waiver of the policy. It would make it equivalent to all the other policies. Anyone can always come to council and ask you to change a policy or to waive a policy. We just don't normally make that one of the steps in the policy.
Yeah.
This is almost a housekeeping to elevate the seriousness of that application to council.
Correct. So, it's not that they can't do it, it's just we're not going to list that in there. Okay?
Thank you.
Any other comments then? Okay, so all those in favor? Anyone opposed? And it's carried. Two minutes to nine. Let's take two minutes, fill up your coffee cups. We have quite a few delegations to go through, so let's take a recess. So, we're going to call our meeting back to order here. Thanks, everyone. So, we're calling the meeting to order. It's back to delegations at 6-1. The first delegation we have, because we have a few proclamations today, but we're going to start with 6-1 with Ms. Joyce Lee from Tourism Dawson Creek is in attendance for the Be a Tourist in Your Own Town. I have a proclamation. I'll just read that out, and then I'll invite you to come forward. So, whereas the tourism industry within Dawson Creek is a major contributor to our local So, whereas the tourism industry within Dawson Creek is a major contributor to our local economy, and whereas it is deemed desirable to designate Be a Tourist in Your Own Town Month to raise awareness of the unparalleled and uncommon attractions within Dawson Creek, thus encouraging residents to visit and become more aware of the value of tourism resources, and whereas the enlightened awareness will lead to a better understanding of the value of tourism within our community. Now, therefore, I do hereby proclaim the month of June as Be a Tourist in Your Own Town Month in Dawson Creek. Thanks, Joyce, come on forward. And we have April and Samantha.
Kelsey, don't forget Kelsey.
We're hiding the corner.
Hey, Kelsey?
I'll talk to you. Put you in the corner. Thanks for coming. Just, okay, proclamation here, and some information. I'll turn things over to you, it was for seconding, because, information, what's happening?
Well, thank you very much for this. We'd like to thank everybody for being with us today as we proclaim the month of June as Tourist in Your Own Town Month. I'd like to put a few little things together that I'd like to give counsel and to the Chief of Staff. Counsel, Counsel, oh, yeah, I'd like to talk a little bit of what's going on in June. We are encouraging local residents to stay patient at home. So, we've put together some really nice little, little things to encourage you and to give you the information that you need to enjoy all the attractions and activities that are going on in our own Dawson Creek. Dawson Creek has a rich history and arts and culture. So, we're going to encourage everybody, we've got some events planned. Specifically, on June 15th, we have Be a Tourist in Your Own Town Counsel, Counsel Program. And our Honorable Mayor and City Council has volunteered and accepted to come over to the Visitor Center, which is downtown in the train station museum, to share an hour of their time and be a counselor with our Be a Tourist with Information counselors, and spend some time meeting the visitors that come into the center and talking to the locals. We're ramping it up and going to be hosting a barbecue when they all come out, so we encourage everybody to come down. So, and on that note, we put together this, these little baggies that we're going to be giving people, and it's called Dawson Creek Tourist in Your Own Town Adventure Kit. And inside, everything a person needs to explore and adventure in our City of Dawson Creek. What we're going to do is get a bunch of bags and put them into the schools and have our local students do original artwork on each bag, which will encourage people to hold on to these bags and not just recycle them right away. So, I would like to, on that note, present to you-
Thank you.
Do you have to spell that?
What's it mean? Thank you, good to see you.
I'd like some of the adventure bag. I'd just like to take this opportunity to introduce you all to Samantha. You're both who are-
Thanks, I'm so honored to be here.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And I know, I'm a Tourist in Your Own Town, I, you know, I want to stress the residents of Dawson Creek. It's amazing and almost unfortunate, every year, I still have people coming up to me saying that, you know, I finally, I've lived here ten years and I finally went into the art gallery. I finally went into the Alaska Highway House, and how amazing it is. And a lot of us forget sometimes, we wait until we've got maybe tourists or family from out of town to come here before we go explore what we have in our own community. And so, this is an opportunity, don't wait for those opportunities, go out and explore now. It's a great opportunity where you can see what we have, so you yourself, as a citizen, can promote the tourism. And there's a lot of great things out there to look at. Thanks a lot for coming in.
That's some great artwork too, by the way. I can draw a stick man on my back. So, the next proclamation we have is under 6-2, we have Mr. Kerry Clark. In attendance, this is for the Day of the Honeybee Proclamation. So, I'll just read out the proclamation. So, whereas the honeybee has, through its role as a pollinator, been an important part of our agricultural heritage since ancient times, and whereas the honeybee plays an essential role in the success of agricultural enterprises in British Columbia, and whereas the honeybee has been under serious threat due to disease and environmental conditions that ultimately threaten the future of agriculture in our province, and whereas it is in the interest of furthering the goal of improved agricultural production to raise the awareness of the role of the honeybee and the plight it faces, now, therefore, I do hereby proclaim May 29th as the Day of the Honeybee in Dawson Creek. And I'm ready to come forward, Kerry.
Thanks for coming in for this. Appreciate you.
Well, yes, thank you for the opportunity to say a few words about this proclamation. It was, it's a bit of an interesting process. It was a, a high school student who, about three years ago, was impressed with the problem with honeybees and took it upon as a project to raise awareness of declaring a day of the honeybee. And that's, I, I had kind of mixed feelings about that, there wasn't any action associated with it. But I, I've been quite impressed with the response. Over a hundred and sixty-five or so local governments across the continent have declared this the Day of the Honeybee. And it's for three, three years now, and it has actually gone up three provinces and actually the Parliament of Canada has actually adopted this day as well. So, it has resulted in a lot of awareness of the problem. Myself, I am here with, I have two hats. I, I am beekeeper for nearly fifty years, and I moved to the Peace Region with the Ministry of Agriculture about thirty years ago as an apiculture specialist. And my job has been changed, I still work for the Ministry of Agriculture, but not to do with honeybees. And, but I'm still a beekeeper and I work with the Peace Region Beekeepers Association. So, it's on their behalf that I'm presenting this. And so, it's quite appropriate for the Peace Region, because the Peace used to be the place in the province that produced about a third of the honey for the whole province with ten percent of beekeepers. And our, our industry has dropped by about ninety percent. It used to be around twenty thousand honey-producing hives here, now we have less than two thousand. That's, the combination of things that have resulted in that. Mostly, it's an economic, the risks and, the risks of that business are higher than the perceived benefits when they get involved with it. So, although it's still a very good place for producing honey, it's a challenging place in winter, and the extra problems of diseases and so on have caused people to not adopt those businesses as they, as people have to adopt. So, I'll answer any questions if you have.
Good morning, Kerry, nice to see you again. In terms of the, the overall bee population, do, can we say that it's down ten percent, fifteen, twenty percent? I know there's a lot less folks actually beekeeping, but has the population been decimated to the-
Like, like farming in general, beekeeping operations have got larger, while the number of people involved in the business have dropped. So, there are less than half the number of people involved. And across the province, or across the, across the continent in North America, we have a, let's see, around thirty percent, I suppose, less than usual. And those are the main management things. The wild bees have also reduced, but we don't have good numbers of them.
Thank you.
Hi, thanks for being here today, Kerry. So, my question is, is this the, the die-off, the disease that we're seeing, is it mostly in the large infrastructure, the large sort of production? Or do you see it yourself as a small, a small time beekeeper?
Everyone sees the problems. The diseases that we refer to, haphids and diseases that have been transferred from other continents in the world to North America. And so, the bees are affected by those diseases and it results in about a third of the colonies dying every year in winter. It used to be around ten percent. So, one, one way of looking at this is one commercial beekeeper used to, just speaking with me, said, it used to be that you could pay for all your business with fifty pounds of honey per hive. And now, it costs double that. The B.C. Peace is a really good place for producing honey, but the cost of new business has gone way up. It physically places bees that-
Right. So, do you see a third of your, a third of your bees die off every winter?
Sometimes more, sometimes less. But it's, it's still possible to keep these, but it is less effective.
Well, thanks very much for coming in, Kerry. So, next we'll move to 6-3, we have Mr. Duncan Redfern with some other folks, I believe. Melanie? Okay. Okay, oh, yeah. So, we're going to do an Access Awareness Day proclamation, so I'll just read that out. So, whereas accessibility and inclusion is essential for ensuring that all community members have equity in opportunities and the ability to fully participate in community life, and whereas accessibility affects all aspects of community life, physical, social, and economic, including employment, transportation, recreation, housing, and other opportunities. And whereas we all have a role to play in ensuring that our communities are as accessible and inclusive as possible, now, therefore, I do hereby proclaim Saturday, June 2nd, 2012, as a day for individual and group action to promote positive ways of working together to create an accessible and exclusive, or sorry, inclusive community for all of our citizens. So, I hereby have Access Awareness Day in Dawson Creek to be held as a barbecue as well on June 5th. So, welcome to come forward.
How are you doing, Rick?
I'm tired of him.
That's Rick Dewey.
Okay, so just invite everybody to join us on June 5th, Access Awareness Day is June 2nd, a Saturday. We're going to, we're going to get it together for the fifth down at the Senior Spark, and it's just an opportunity to raise awareness around inclusivity and just people with varying abilities in our community.
You mean Peace Park or where is the Senior Spark?
Senior Spark, Red Cross.
The senior, the-
Oh, sorry.
The prominent.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
It's for everybody.
Yeah, sorry.
So, Access Awareness Day is a campaign to raise awareness about disability, accessibility, and social inclusion. It's made possible by all the dedicated people who are, who recognize that every individual has the right and deserves the opportunity to participate in all aspects of the life. As a community or as a society, we all share the responsibility to remove all barriers and to provide the independence to ensure that all people have independence, dignity, and self-esteem in all this. Right? So, as I said, we'd like to invite everyone down, to bring their families, and join us for barbecue on June 5th.
We all feel the kickoff to Be a Tourist in Your Own Town. Tourist information is going to be rallying to support this.
We should add that it's a partnership between the Society for Community Living and the Dawson Creek Division up there.
Yeah, so, hope to see everyone there.
Thanks for coming in. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And any volunteers, sorry, we forgot to add that. We'd like to volunteer to help or-
That's what I was just saying, Terry, Terry knows where the Senior Spark is. Yes, that was a dig, Counsel.
Was that a shot?
It was.
You're going to cook and I'll serve.
All right.
In all fairness, I aspire to be a senior one day.
We were in a snowstorm one year.
Yes.
Last year.
I wore ski pants.
No, wasn't it last year?
At the barbecue.
Yeah.
It was cold.
Last year. So, we'll move on. 6-4, we have Mr. Rick Coombs in attendance, he is coming forward as a delegation to talk to us about our sign bylaw, I believe. Mr. Coombs, have a seat.
Good morning, O'Callaghan.
Good morning.
Mayor Mike. I submitted a application of article in regards to making a minor change to the bylaw. And I think you should have the documentation in front of you. You don't?
No.
Basically, there, I was recently called by the sign inspector to go over some signs that I have in behind Tim Horton's on 8th Street. It's actually in the property of Industrial Forest Service, it's in their backyard. It faces the Tim Horton's sign, or Tim Horton's parking lot.
Yeah.
And the bylaw, the current bylaw says that the sign shall be a single column, in other words, one post. So, we poke your four-by-four sign, which is regulation, it has to be mounted only to a, a single post. Initially, I did that. But with the strong winds, it became an issue with the sign vibrating so bad that it punched a hole in the sign where bolt holes were, so I put up two posts. And that's actually been there for about two years now. And I was informed recently that that was in contradiction. So, it was suggested I come and meet the City Council here to see if we can make amendment to the bylaw. Improve two columns and/or a frame for the signage. The sign, I have a couple of copies, I did make changes. Did you like one?
Sure.
She made enough.
Thank you.
I recently just did this last week.
Just pass them over here.
What's that?
Just let me have a look, please. Oh, okay.
So, that's what it looks like now.
So, Rick, sorry to your point, there used to be, and I remember this, it was one probably six-inch steel column-
Yeah, that's right.
-steel pole that had these signs attached to it.
Yes.
And at that point, it met our sign bylaw-
Yes.
-because it's a single column. So, when you changed it to look like this with two is when you were approached by bylaws saying that that doesn't mean-
Um-
Or within, a couple of years later, you're saying-
Yes.
Okay.
The sign didn't last very long, not even a month on the single post, because it vibrated so bad with the wind. It just wore holes in the sign because it was attached to a, the sign's made of Lexan or plexiglass or whatever, it just wore a hole in it. So, that's why I put the two posts up, not realizing that I was in contradiction. So, after meeting with the inspector, he suggested I make some changes, and so there are my changes there. So, I'd like to see if we can make amendments to the bylaw, so that it isn't either.
Okay, thanks, Rick. So, okay, I'll go to Counsel Schuman first.
So, the, the changes that you made, these are the changes that you made?
That's correct.
And these are, this, you're still in, you're still breaking the rules by doing these changes, or these are good?
According to this, because it says only one-
Oh, okay.
There's actually two poles holding that frame up. And by the bylaw says it can only be-
Yeah.
-a single column, in other words, one post.
Sorry, I was, I was thinking that you had made the changes to fall into line, but-
But you would have, to fall in line, I'd have to have just one post.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you have a picture of the, before the two?
This is what it was a couple of weeks ago.
Sure, so Counsel Wilbur and then Counsel McFadden.
I'm just wondering, this particular property, is it zone M2, M3, or is it zone C3?
M2.
M2, I think.
Okay. Because Patterson Signs has forty-foot signs on single pedestal metal posts that don't blow in the wind. So, my concern is, that's kind of really opening up a can of worms there. Like, it, I mean, technically, you could put it, the way this bylaw reads, on a single post, it doesn't say what size a post or what size the sign has to be. So, you could literally put two twelve-inch posts- So you could literally put two twelve inch posts in there and all of a sudden have a big, long string of billboards across there. So my concern is, I think something has to be done with the bylaw, but in this case, my concern is, how far do you go? How big are these posts? And for C3, there is an actual size of the sign and it has to be on a building or a fence, where with the zoning under M2 and M3, it just says single column, metal or plastic post. Well, for example, Patterson Signs has billboards on a single metal pedestal post, so.
What size of post and how big of sign?
Well, they have signs up to forty feet, but I'm wondering if.
It must be framed though.
If you just, well, they are metal.
They are. They're welded. All Pattersons are welded.
Yeah, but you do have a frame on here, so I'm just wondering if maybe you just need a bigger post.
Yep.
Stronger post. Because I just see it opening up that all of a sudden now, if you're in an M2 or M3, anywhere in town, you can start putting up these double posted huge signs.
Yep.
That's my concern.
Counselor McFadden.
Well, I was gonna ask the question, maybe Counselor Wilbur's answered it, but who cares if it's one post or two holding the sign up? What's the big deal? I don't understand what.
Well, my.
Jim?
The intent of the bylaw provisions in industrial was to prevent billboards, basically, to prevent the option for any industrial zone property to put up a large billboard. That was the intent behind the bylaw. At one time, you didn't allow this sort of third party advertising at all. You were approached by a sign, startup sign company that wanted to place them on fences in commercial areas. That's how you get the signs you get around the two Tim Hortons around A and W. When you allowed that, you turned your mind to adjacent industrial properties that could have the same view lines and made a determination that you didn't want billboards on those industrial properties. And that's where the regulation comes from.
Because prior to that, you could not advertise unless it was your business. You could only advertise your business, not, as Jim said, third party. So we're starting to see that as, you know, vibrant economy in the community, more people wanting to advertise, obviously. So I see Mr. Coombs put on here, was this the four by four sign in the wind? Is that, are you suggesting if we modify our bill, our policy to allow double, but to a maximum of four by four? Is that what you're asking for?
No, I'm just allow, asking to modify the current bylaw to say, instead of single column, double column and/or a steel frame structure.
Okay. Counselor Wilbur?
I don't know if everybody has the bylaw in front of them. And if your worship may I read it out so that I can clarify?
Sure. I mean, we're not gonna, we'll obviously have to do this at a later date as well anyway.
Yeah, okay. So signs advertising goods or services available at another location are permitted in M2 and M3 and C3 zones only. Signs in the M2 and M3 zones shall be a single column sign incorporating only metal or plastic components. Signs in the C3 zone shall be permanently affixed to the side of a building or fence and measure no more than 1.3 meters by 1.3 meters, which is your four feet by four feet. There is no size regulation on signs that can be on single pedestal posts under M2 and M3 zones.
Mm-hmm. Thanks.
So you're, sorry.
Go ahead, Rick.
So you're saying that those signs can actually be bigger than four by four?
There's no size.
Well, and that's.
My understanding was four by four, that's why.
In the commercial zoning.
In the commercial zoning. That's why I was asking, what is that property zoned as that this sign is on?
So, Jim?
Yeah. So keeping in mind that the difference between a billboard and four, four by four signs stocked on top of four four by four signs is in the eye of the beholder. The intention was to make it a requirement that there was a significant capital investment in signs in the M2 zone because you weren't really fussy about having the M2 zone turned into the same kind of abundant advertising of other areas. That was, that was council's, council was reluctant when they opened up the issue in the first place to third party advertising signs and was just trying to limit the proliferation exactly by making it, prevent billboards and require that if there was going to be these signs, they would most likely be for the property itself because of the investment required. I mean, that's, you were doing that intentionally.
Yeah.
You were doing it intentionally so that a sign company with access to a fence in a commercial zone would be able to, at relatively low cost, produce four by four signs. And someone owning an industrial property was going to have to go to a lot of expense to match that advertising bang for the buck. You were doing that intentionally. That's the scheme you've set up.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Coombs is asking you to change that scheme.
Okay. Any further questions from council? No? Okay. Well, thanks, Rick, for coming in and bringing it to our attention. I mean, what we do now is later on, we'll bring it forward and council will decide whether it stays or goes, basically, on whether there's going to be changes or not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot. So next we'll move on to six five. We have Mr. Jeremy Bennett in attendance, and this is regarding an appeal that he has for a vicious dog designation. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I'm the owner of Kiwi and Rex, which recently, I've sent a letter on April 25th. A few days before that, I had an incident between my dog and my neighbor's dog. I got home from work that day and the city bylaw officer and the SPCA come by and notified me about the incident. My dogs apparently were seen from their kit. My one dog, which is a massive Malibu, had pulled their dog, a Chihuahua, through the fence. And that was about all the information I was given. So then I tried to ask for more information. Was told that the city bylaw, which I do have, they have no, they are bound by the city to make the decision that my dogs are vicious because of what had happened. I feel that it wasn't dealt with properly or just pushed aside that, yeah, it's another big dog that injured a small dog or injured a dog. I'm just here because my dogs are not vicious. They're super gentle. I have never, ever had an issue with my dogs before in the past. I used to have a pit bull as a neighbor dog and my other dog had two big dogs, my other neighbor had two big dogs. You know, I never had issues there. The neighbor that I do have now is a new neighbor, so I'm sure that that's part of it. We did not introduce our dogs before this incident. And she clearly wouldn't want to introduce her dogs now, but as far as that goes, just when the city bylaw officer and the SPCA officer come over to my house, it just was pretty cut and dry. You know, there was no asking about my dogs or asking about their dogs or anything like that. It was just my dogs were, he injured the other dog, they were vicious, and that is how it was going to be. My neighbors are really nice people. Their dogs are really loud and barked a lot. And, you know, I'm sure that has a lot to do with it. The kid that seen my dog pull the other dog through the fence also said that when she was, when they come over, knocked on the door of my house and were trying to get a hold of us so they could go in the yard or whatever to get their dog. She said that my wife or the girl was inside and went down through the door. Well, it was actually my roommate. He's six foot two, bald and two hundred and some pounds, so, I mean, I'm not saying that she didn't see the dog pull their dog through. I'm just saying that maybe she didn't see what, or paid attention to what happened prior to the incident. And, yeah, so I'm just, just here to see what I can do. My dogs absolutely are not vicious. I think if anyone is at fault, it would be myself and my neighbor for not recognizing the severity of what our dogs were doing at the fence to each other. Since then, I have fortified the fence. I'm in the process of redoing all the fencing in my yard. It's 490 percent done. But I do have just straight plywood to isolate each set of dogs in the area where it happened. And, yeah, I've never had an issue with my dogs. It's never been like this. They're, because my dog is big, you might be taken back from him just because he's so excited and he loves people. And when he comes up to you, he just wants to lick you and that's all it is. So that's all I have to say.
Jeremy, I got a few questions, and I know council might have a few as well. Did your dogs leave the yard? Your dog stayed in your yard or did they leave your yard?
Uh, no, it was right at the fence.
So there was just a hole in the fence, you're saying, or?
Um, well, the fence, it runs vertical.
Oh, okay.
And there is about a gap in between each set of fencing. I look back, which is both, but that's as big as my dog's nose, so.
Oh, okay. So a large enough hole for the other, the neighbor's dog to get through, but not your dog to get out?
Yeah, it's just that they had to both be right at the fence, yes.
Yeah. And to your comment about bylaw being cut and dry, and, you know, the bylaw is fairly cut and dry, so bylaw would have been followed through with their actions. Jim?
Yeah, actually, we should differentiate this from the policy matter we were talking about before. When you have a regulatory bylaw of this nature, it's mandatory under the act that appeal be available to council. So you're sitting here in appeal of the decision. That's required under the act, so that makes it different than a policy matter. This is an actual bylaw matter where there's a regulatory regime in place.
Okay.
A regulatory regime doesn't give discretion to the SPCA who are charged with enforcing it. It's as if a dog injures another dog seriously, it's automatically deemed vicious. In the hearing, which is where you are now, you are entitled to consider factors over and above that, but the on the ground SPCA or bylaw enforcement officer is not.
Okay. Thanks for that. And we might have more questions after on that. Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, so you say that your dogs love people and that's, that's great, but obviously they don't love other little dogs from.
Like I said, this is the first time I've ever seen aggression towards a dog. They do play with other dogs and I've never had an issue with them. My neighbor's dogs are my dogs. You know, if they ever got into each other's yards before, and I've never, never had an issue, you know, I've bring their dog back over to their yard and they were never, they were playing. So whatever I didn't, I wasn't there, so whatever was not seen from before the incident actually happened, obviously there was a trigger there that had the aggression come out in that way. My dogs are six or seven years old. I've never had, take them down to the rivers, we'd take them walking everywhere, take them in a truck. They're a part of our lives, they come with us everywhere. We've never had this kind of something come up. And I still walk them and everything, and I don't see this aggression or anything in them, so I don't know what happened. I don't know what the trigger was, but there was obviously something that has never been there before.
So you're not, you're not disputing the fact that your, your dogs did this? But I, there seems to be some sort of question, you're saying the, the child that witnessed this maybe didn't, so are you thinking maybe the little dog got into your yard and got out of its yard into your yard, or maybe it didn't get pulled in? Or so are you suggesting something differently happened or?
No, I'm just saying that what happened prior to it, whether their dog was nipping my dog or was getting aggressive with my dog also, it's hard to say. Like we, I can make a lot of scenarios up, but I am just saying that my dogs have never done anything like this, so there's obviously some kind of trigger that happened between the dogs. I don't know what it would be.
Yeah. Just kind of guessing because you didn't see it. You just guessed.
Well, I just, I, I thought there was some kind of question you were talking about, the child may have seen or may not have seen, or so I thought maybe there was something that you thought might have happened as opposed to what the child may or may or not have seen.
Yeah, like I just, that's all the information I was given is that my dog had pulled their dog through the fence and I wasn't, there was no other information I was given. I tried calling and asking, so I, I'm unaware of what happened prior to it. So the child or kid, they're, she's seven or nine, I'm sure, had seen my dog pull their dog through the fence, but what happened before that, like, now as soon as their dog's out in the yard and they start barking, because since they're in the yard, they'll bark, come to the fence and bark. Now they're stopping their dogs and getting them away from the fence. Before that, where's the kid playing and just allowing the dog to stay in the fence barking at my dog? And what was happening at that point, I don't know.
Yeah.
If I was there, I would have been telling my dog to get away from the fence, but they're really good.
And as you said, you're in the process of moving or fixing that fence on that side or?
Yeah. I've redone all my fence in my yard. I got about fifty feet left of fence to move in.
Okay. So Counselor Wilbur?
It's Kiwi and Rex?
Yes.
Cute names. So, yeah, my, you did, your worship answer, or asked my first question is that obviously you had a vertical good neighbor fence and having Shih Tzu's mind could climb it like a ladder, so we changed our fence. So I do under, I understand that and they can be yippy. And, and obviously, Jeremy, you're a responsible pet owner. You have realized the fence needed to be fixed and you're fixing it. So my question is, if the vicious dog designation is not removed, what does that mean for Kiwi and Rex and Jeremy?
So there is a whole bunch of stipulations under the vicious dog designation around harnessing and all that, but Jim, do you know that?
Through your worship, the primary requirement is that you must secure them in your yard. So the fencing that Mr. Bennett's talking about is exactly what's required if a dog has that designation. However, when they're off their property, they have to be leashed and muzzled, which is different than a non-designated dog is entitled to be at large without muzzle and without leash if they will come to command. So it's a significant difference in how the, the dogs are handled when they're off the property. On the property, it's a fence that prevents them getting out, which it sounds like is being taken care of either way.
Yeah. So, okay, maybe I'll go to you first.
I just want to ask, do we not have anything in our bylaws that says dogs that are a certain size have to be muzzled anyways when they're being walked? Do we not have that here?
Through your worship, of a certain breed.
Yes.
Pit bulls.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. My, we obviously don't know what happened before the incident. There's not a clear picture. Is, did the little puppy survive, like, or was it just injured?
Yeah, it was bit on its bum, but I was told is the way that it.
Okay.
So it has a puncture wound and then when I went over to see it, it, yeah, it just had a puncture wound on the side and then around its, you know, some stuff.
So it got a good bite. So I, I just, I kind of see this as, only because I have Shih Tzus, but a yappy little dog at the fence and, and.
Yeah.
So I, I don't, I don't know what the call is, but I don't, Jeremy seems like a very responsible pet owner and he's done right without being asked, right off the bat, fixing the fence, so.
So the call would be, Mr. Bennett is asking for us to appeal that, so we'll have to later on in the meeting. That will, discussion will be whether that's the wishes of council or not, I guess. Counselor Schuman?
So Jeremy, the little dog, the neighbor dog, was then in your yard with your two dogs. After the initial pull through, they didn't continue to beat it up and kill it or anything like that, right? Like, I mean, obviously it would have taken a little bit of time for the other pet owner to get to your yard to retrieve their dog. And so your dogs didn't, after the initial sort of pull through it.
No.
They didn't continue to, I'm just, in my eye, I think, okay, so now they've maybe attacked this little dog and the designation comes after that so that if you're out and about, it doesn't happen again. You know, maybe they got a taste for little dog, right? I, I don't know how that all works with, with dogs. But, but they didn't continue to aggress upon the little dog in your backyard before the neighbor got it out of there, is that?
As far as I know, no. My neighbor said that she ran and banged on my door and nobody answered her, and she went into the yard and got her dog out and over to the back.
Oh, so that's interesting.
Yeah. Counselor Kenny?
So, so the dog was pulled through, which is probably what happened with the, the punctures. The child went in and got the dog and there was no aggression from your dogs when she went in to get her little dog?
Not the child, the, her mother.
Her mother, but there was no aggression? Her mother, but there was no aggression at all when the mother went in and got the dog, and your dogs just backed off?
I wasn't there, but, um, I know how my dogs are, and you can go into my yard. What my dogs do is they will bark at a distance to let me know that somebody is in my yard.
Yeah.
And, um, I had to do a guile before you came to do my fence. Um, the, uh, I come home, and someone was obviously in my yard, because I have yellow paint on my grass for P M D, so they made it in my yard just fine. Like I say, I don't have issues with my dogs towards people or other pets. They definitely, uh, really excited for the first, like, three minutes or something, when other animals are around, they just want to play, which I kind of wish they wouldn't be so excited, because it's like six years old, I'm just hoping he gets out of the puppy stage, but, um, they're, to me, they're not vicious. Uh, I know that dogs are different when the owners aren't in the yard or around. And I have, I have friends and other people that do have to go into my yard in occasion to grab this or that, and I've never had an issue in that aspect either. People that aren't always seen from my dogs to be able to go into my yard and stuff.
So thank you. Is there any, that's my clarification. Jim?
Through your worship, because this is actually a hearing under the bylaw, you can make your decision right now. It doesn't have to be, in fact, it should be made in the presence of the applicant.
Okay, thanks for that advice. So councillor Malkinson?
Is it, your worship, is it possible for the other dog to come into your yard? Is it small enough to get into your yard?
Um, yeah, it's very possible. Um, I wasn't there, but it was bit from, it was bit from behind. I don't know. It's kind of difficult to pull the dog in from, I don't know. I'm not a dog.
Just, for clarity, though, the bylaw doesn't care.
Yes.
If the dog had wandered through an open gate onto Mr. Bennett's property and the attack had happened, the bylaw would still deem the attacking dogs vicious. Uh, the standard the bylaw imposes is that dogs don't attack one another no matter what circumstances they find themselves in.
If the little dog had bit the big dog through the fence, it would be the one.
This is based on, um, prevailing common law that says every dog gets his first bite, but after that, we all share a responsibility to make sure it doesn't happen again. That's just the, the longstanding prevailing common law.
Okay, thanks. Councillor Wilber?
Take, we don't know how the dog got in your yard, and to me, the, the dog's okay, so I, and your dogs did not rip this little puppy apart. The lady was able to get her dog out of the yard. Um, you, you, you're fixing your fence, you're being responsible, so do we need a motion then?
Yes.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion that we remove the vicious dog designation for Kiwi and Rex.
Okay, seconded by councillor Kenny? Councillor Malkinson, you have a question then?
Yes, I have two questions. Um, one, are we, or it's Jeremy Bennett that's appealing the vicious dog designation, because it's our designation, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, yeah, through the SPCA helps enforce it under contract.
Yes, it's only the city that can make the designation, though?
Yes.
Um, and I just wanted to speak to the motion that she, that was just made, is remove the avenue of future conflict between the dogs, and I think that, I don't know, it's my way to go.
Okay. Any other questions or comments then for Mr. Bennett or for the motion? Okay, so the motion from council is, for this one here, is to remove the designation. So no further comments, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, that's carried. So thanks very much for coming in, and, uh, I guess it's one of those opportunities we say we hope we don't get to have to see you again for this issue.
Please.
Please.
Can you, if you may, just to set up the PowerPoint? Okay, so we're just going to take a two-minute recess, we can set up our PowerPoint then for our next delegation. Okay, so we'll call the meeting back to order, and welcome. I know you have a bit of a presentation you want to talk to us about today, so I'll just turn the floor over to you.
Well, thank you for having us, Mayor Burden and Council.
Can I, sorry, can I interrupt and just maybe trouble you just to flip the microphone up a little ways, just so?
The devil's going in here.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so thank you for.
There we go.
Hello, okay.
Way to go.
So thank you for having us. I'm Catherine Charbonneau, I'm the president of the Early Childhood Educators of B C Dawson Creek branch. And this is Hope Steckless, she's on our board, and she's also the Supported Child Development Consultant. Um, so yes, we're here to talk to you today about the Community Plan for a Public System of Integrated Early Care and Learning. So this is a plan to address the childcare crisis we are having in B C and all of Canada. So, so the plan is a community initiative coming out of the two organizations, E C B C and the Childcare Coalition's. It's a concrete, innovative, ambitious solution. Um, we feel the, it is, paints a concrete vision, is innovative and ambitious. Um, the plan builds on well-established evidence. The first is that public spending on the early years is wise and a social economic investment. The second thing is that quality childcare is early learning, and that children do play, learn through play-based programs that have safe nurturing relationships. And this divide we seem to have in the province is between what is viewed and, what is viewed as learning and what is viewed as care is a false divide and a dangerous one. So on, it's kind of responds to two conflicting realities. On the one hand, B C government implemented full-day kindergarten for five-year-olds, and they're still, um, kind of looking at developing programs for three- to four-year-olds as well. So public, while public funding or universal programs for young children are, is long overdue, B C still has no plan to meet the needs of working families, no plan to ensure infants and toddlers, um, which a significant number are in unregulated care, um, and they have, to have access to quality care, and there's no plan to recognize the impact of full school day kindergarten on childcare. So we use the language, uh, full day, um, school day, as most families or most parents who are working, these hours exceed nine to three. So, um, full-day kindergarten is great, but families who still, who work longer that are needing still care for after those hours. So it's, um, B C still has an ongoing childcare crisis. There's high fees. Um, fees are so high, it's the second highest expense to families after housing, and it's, um, soon becoming the first. Quality childcare costs more than post-secondary education today. Wages are too low for early childhood educators with college training to continue to work for wages. That leaves their families below the poverty line. There's too few spaces for children. Um, only about, only twenty percent of B C childrens from birth to twelve have licensed spaces for them. And the fourth indicator, which is of increasing concern, is that we are seeing the growth of big-box commercial childcare in B C. All of the international evidence, evidence tell this, tells us that this is, um, not a way to meet the needs of children's families and their communities. So let's look at how wealthy Canada is. As you can see, we're one of the fourth wealthiest countries. Um, let's see how we kind of go on to our public spending into the child, into early years programs. So much to the shock of many Canadians, Canada ranks last on a number of the important measures of how it is we invest in our young children. Canada ranks last out of fourteen developed countries for the percentage of how we spend our gross domestic product G D P. And when it comes to accessibility compared to all the other countries, so families who have access to childcare, again, Canada is dead last. So, um, this is another way of looking at the way we spend on childcare. So this is, so Canada, again, is at the bottom. Canada spends point two five, two-five percent, that's a quarter of one percent of our G D P. And B C, again, is really low as well. Okay, sorry. Um, and it only spends about point two-two percent, even when we go into, um, to our spending on the full-day kindergarten, it's only about point two-eight percent for, um, that of our G D P. And which is when, and the U N S F, when they put a benchmark, they say that we should be spending about one percent, and we're only spending about point two-eight percent. So it is a, uh, the plan is a made-in-B C plan, and it draws on national, international models and examples. Um, seeing the plans that they have already been in place internationally and how they work, the B C plan rejects commercial childcare as a solution for childcare. They, instead, it looks to public systems that work well, um, and systems that integrate childcare and education under one lead ministry, and where childcare and learning can come together as strong and equal partners. As a result, we feel it's important that the Ministry of Education has a growing role in the lives of young children. And already, four provinces and two territories in Canada have already moved childcare into the Ministry of Education. Right now, our childcare is under the Ministry of Education and Family Development, and as currently, um, our state of childcare, it's not working. So the plan tries to integrate the best of education and quality childcare, it, which, these programs, they would like to focus, holding on to programs that keep care at the core and don't become a downward extension of academic focus, but remains true to the values of E C, which is that children thrive in caring relationships. So just as we know, child, children thrive in environments at home and in the community and the world that supports their development, the same applies to this plan. It will thrive in a bigger environment with some key supportive elements in place, so that the plan calls on four important elements in the bigger world beyond the plan that will make this plan doable. So asking for strong family policy, so time, resources, and services. Um, provincial and federal commitments, um, saying we don't need, we don't presume to speak for First Nation communities, and we acknowledge those communities have control of their own funding. And the plan requires new funding, not redistribute funds from other programs. So the, right now, we have childcare programs that are isolated and fragmented all over communities. With the new plan, the childcare programs will be part of a cohesive network called the Early Year Center Network. The program will receive operating funding that will allow them to offer childcare at a minimal cost to families, and care providers will be given a living wage. So with funding, the, we talked about fees, there would be ten dollars a day for full-time care, seven dollars a day for part-time care. It would be free for families with an annual income of under forty thousand, and early childhood educator, educator wages raised to an average of twenty-five dollars an hour plus benefits. So let's talk about benefits to the B C economy. So with more, um, women being able to go back into the workforce because their children have care, that'll be about seventeen thousand. So that would mean five hundred million more in taxes collected, twenty-three thousand E Cs would be better paid, and three hundred million saved by businesses because their employees would have childcare, and they wouldn't, they would be able to retain their staff. So change is here. The status quo is not acceptable fallback. Um, it's going to be a process, so with all the information and the research out there, we know that, um, the childcare system is not working, so we are, you know, looking for individuals, municipalities, organizations to endorse the plan, to get, um, this in place. And so this is just a list of the support endorsement already, different municipalities and childcare organizations. So yeah, I just thank you for having us here today. We hope that you feel excited as we do, that there is a plan now, that there's concrete and has solutions to the crisis children, families, and their communities are facing today. The truth is that the existing childcare system is not working, and we hope that you will endorse the plan and move it forward for lasting change. Is there any questions?
Good. Thanks, Catherine. Yeah, I was looking at council, if there's any questions at this time.
So I don't have a question, I have a comment. Thank you so much for being here today. You guys know that I support all of the work that you're doing in our community, and if anybody doesn't know what these ladies are up to in, in, in our community, I have to tell you, they're up to a lot. I sit at that Success by Six Children First Board Table, sit in on their meetings and participate, and, uh, the things that they're up to in our community, they're just amazing, amazing initiatives. So I want to thank you for being here today, and we'll be looking at this later on, under mayor's business. Right?
So my question then is, so who, this is a provincial issue, so when you're presenting it, who, who else at the provincial government is it being presented to? Because obviously, when I read through your request, I guess, if you want to say to the provincial government under the grant, under the, um, under this plan, it's suggesting a one-point-five-billion-dollar investment from the provincial government to help early childcare. And so when I'm reading through the plan, and it's asking for that much money for this, and is that to help offset, like, when we're talking a ten-dollar cap, so who picks up the extra costs? You're asking the provincial government, the taxpayers to pick that?
Yeah, the provincial and the federal, and just, um, just the numbers that we were looking at. With more women being able to go back into the workforce, there'll be more taxes collected to go back into that pot to help pay for the childcare system.
So what's, what are the thoughts then on the home-based business, if you want to call it that, for childcare, licensed, so I'm talking authentic ones? So you're saying now that, uh, if somebody's running a business out of their home doing childcare, that they would only be able to charge ten dollars under this plan, but they would get subsidized by the government for the rest, just so I understand?
Yep, that's exactly what it is. They would be, yeah, subsidized, they would get the operating funding, so to be able to earn a living wage, twenty-five dollars an hour, and they would get the qualifications. I didn't go over that because it was, um, it would take a long time, but they would be having to be getting their diploma in early childhood education. So that in itself, you know, they're providing quality care, they deserve to have that wage, so that funding would come from the government, and then, um, they would only be able to charge ten dollars a day or seven dollars a day for part-time.
So part of the plan is advocating them to get paid more?
Mm-hmm, for sure, and.
Because when you use the word living wage, that depends on which terminology you use, but the living wage can be a fluctuating wage depending, so I'm not sure on how you're using the term living wage. Depending on, when you, when you read up on the term for living wage, it can be based, the wages are dependent on what you require as a person.
Mm-hmm.
So somebody, a living wage might only be fifteen dollars, somebody might be forty dollars.
Right, and that is the terminology that the plan did use, so I don't feel I can really answer that question very clearly for you.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Okay.
I'm thinking that living wage is probably above the poverty line.
Definitely.
That's what I was assuming.
Because right now, I mean. Mm-hmm, and I, because of the training that they are going to be getting, I think it's, I mean, people who have gone to college training, university training, are getting, you know, over twenty dollars an hour, and with that training and, you know, looking after their children, the children of our future, I believe, I feel they, they should be valued that wage.
Well, I think one of the things, sorry, that the plan also looks at, this is like a universal plan, so that, you know, right now, you have competing childcare centers. I mean, because there's limited space, people can charge more, I mean, the, the, the amount of what people are charging for childcare now has increased, I mean, quite substantially over the last few years. People can charge up to forty dollars a day, and if you have more than one child in childcare, that is a lot of money. And like Catherine was saying, like, it's like the second, um, highest, um, outcome of your money next to your mortgage or to housing, so it's, it's huge. So this plan would help sort of balance that out for everybody, not just the people that are providing care, but for families as well. So I think it's, it's really something to look at.
Okay, councillor Malkinson?
I saw on the chart there that Denmark actually has a very, very large percentage of expenditure on their childcare. Do they have a similar system like this, a ten dollars a day, seven dollars a day?
I know, I don't know the details of their plan, but I know they do put a lot into the programs. I believe it's, I, I'm not sure, but I'm thinking it's free for the families, but don't quote me on that, but I know they have a really good childcare system. And when the, um, the groups were looking at what plans to follow, they took a lot of, followed a lot of what they were doing, the European models.
Any further questions then from council? You're okay? Okay, well, thank you very much for coming in then. Appreciate your time.
Thank you for having us. Thank you for having us.
Duncan? Can you just plug the lights, okay? Excellent. There you go. Just the right angle. Here, uh, seven-four.
Seven-four?
Yeah. I'm self-organized here too. So we were at seven-four, if everybody's got that up and running. So we're at reports. Under seven-four, we have report 12-096 from the Deputy Director of Community Services, and this is regarding the Encana Event Center Operational Review. Counselor Kenny?
I'll move the recommendation that report number 12-096 from the Deputy Director of Community Service regarding the Encana Event Center Operational Review be received for information.
Thank you. Counselor Malkinson?
I'd like to see the report. It says that it's available upon request.
Yep, it is. So you just go see staff, and they'll grab it for you.
Perfect.
The reason why we didn't attach it, I think it was about 80, 85 pages, so it was quite large to put on here. But anybody wishing to see it, definitely it's available. So no further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, and it's carried. Seven-five is report 12-098 from the Chief Financial Officer, and this is the Consolidated Budget Variance Report. Counselor Wilbur?
I may motion that report number 12-098 from the Chief Financial Officer regarding March 3, 2012 Consolidated Budget Variance Report be received for information.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Schuman. Any questions for Shelley or anyone?
Good job, Shelley.
Yeah. What do you do in your spare time?
Good job, Shelley.
Okay, so seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. Seven-six is report 12-091, and this is from the Director of Infrastructure Sustainable Development. This is for a development variance permit for 1201 117th Avenue. Counselor Kenny?
I'll move the recommendation that report number 12-091 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the development variance permit application for Windridge Properties Limited located south of 116th Avenue between 15th and 16th Street be received. And further, that staff be directed to proceed with the required notification process for development variance permit 12-05.
Okay. Seconded by Counselor McFadden. Any questions for Shelley or anyone?
Good job, Shelley.
Yeah. What do you do in your spare time?
Good job, Shelley.
Okay, so seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. Seven-six is report 12-091, and this is from the Director of Infrastructure Sustainable Development. This is for a development variance permit for 1201 117th Avenue. Counselor Kenny?
I'll move the recommendation that report number 12-091 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the development variance permit application for Richard Segayama at 1201 117th Avenue be received. And further, that staff be directed to proceed with the required notification process for development variance permit 12-05.
Okay. Seconded by Counselor McFadden. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor then? Opposed? Carried. Seven-seven is report 12-088 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development. This is for another variance permit, Lot 1, Section 10, which is south of 116th Avenue for Windridge Properties. So Counselor Schuman?
So I would move the recommendation that report number 12-088 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the development variance permit application for Windridge Properties Limited located south of 116th Avenue between 15th and 16th Street be received. And further, that staff be directed to proceed with the required notification process for development variance permit 12-04.
Okay. Seconded by Counselor Wilbur. Any questions? Counselor Malkinson?
So they're already on track with this, hey? Like, the actual subdivision or whatever's already been approved, it's just some details that we're approving, isn't that right?
I don't know if the final subdivision approvals have gone through yet, have they?
No, through your worship, this is the reverse, actually. It's very early in the process. The developer has brought you previous development plans, you've issued a development permit, nothing's proceeded on the development permit, now they're asking for a slight variance regarding setbacks. Our understanding is that they are trying to match up their development with the local market, and that they haven't yet hit upon a mix that they feel is commercially viable to go ahead with the development. In fact, this development has had an extension. It was a two-year development permit that's been extended, and now they're asking for these variations.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay, so on this, all those in favor then? Opposed, and it's carried. Seven-eight is report 12-092 from the Director of Infrastructure Sustainable Development. This is for development variance permit for 720 105th Avenue. Counselor Malkinson?
I move that we receive this report from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the development variance permit for heart modular homes, and that we approve the issuance of a development permit, development variance permit number 12-03, that allows for relaxation of the rear setback to 5.68 meters.
Okay. Seconded by Counselor Kenny. Any comments? So all those in favor then? Opposed, and it's carried. Seven-nine is report 12-089 from the Director, again, of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development. This is for development variance permit for heart modular homes, and that we approve the issuance of a development permit, development variance permit number 12-03, that allows for relaxation of the rear setback to 5.68 meters. Okay. Seconded by Counselor Kenny. Any comments? So all those in favor then? Opposed, and it's carried. Seven-nine is report 12-089 from the Director, again, of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development. This is for the cancellation of permit and refund for Poketer Holdings Incorporated. Counselor Kenny?
I'll move the recommendation that report number 12-089 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding refund of the financial security for development permit, DP 10-08 be received. And further, that staff be directed to cancel the permit at 1213-1221 Alaska Avenue and refund the financial security in the amount of $25,000 to Poketer Holdings Incorporated.
Okay, thank you. Seconded by Counselor Wilbur. Any questions or comments from Counselor Malkinson? Oh, sorry, McFadden.
Thank you. Is this the heart people on Alaska?
Not heart modular, no, this is the one right next to KFC.
It is modular homes, but it's a competitor to heart?
Yes. And they were running Cascade Realty and Remax, or sorry.
Oh, okay.
Cascade.
Cascade, yeah.
And it says here they're shutting down, are they shutting down at this location or shutting down completely?
They've moved to the mall, it's my belief, with a full office there, but not moving the homes there.
My understanding is the modular home sales is not going to operate in the area anymore?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Schuman?
How long did they do business at that location?
You're going where I was going.
Like, they just get to be there doing business for a certain amount of time and not have to?
This would have been, this would be, 2012 is the second year, the original permit was in 2010.
Yeah. So Counselor Schuman's going where I'm going. So under our policy, when we take this security to do the paving, which they never did, how long do we usually give them, and how come it wouldn't have been done by now?
Well, they had a year and then asked for an extension of a year, so they would have had two years, basically.
Which is basically now.
We would have been cashing the bond this year to pave the lots. However, since everything's going to be gone from their paving, the area actually would be a barrier to future development rather than not.
Yes. Yeah, and I agree with that, I'm just, that's why I was curious, typically one year then?
Yes.
Okay. So is Counselor's, that what you were wondering too, right?
Yeah, I was. I didn't remember the extension.
Any other questions or comments? That we'll have a nice, level, shaled yard, ready for development for something. Okay, so all those in favor then? Opposed, and it's carried. Seven-ten is report 12-093 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development. This is for a variance permit for Edge Controls, 34 Vic Turner Road.
Development?
Sorry, development permit. Sorry, Counselor Malkinson?
I move that report number 12-093 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the development permit application for Edge Controls be received, and that staff be directed to proceed with the required notification process for development permit 12-13, and authorized to issue development permit 12-13 to Edge Controls Incorporated for the development of a five multi-tenant mixed-use commercial retail, oh, for the development of five multi-tenant mixed-use commercial retail units at 34 Vic Turner Road upon successful completion of the required 10-day notification period and receipt of the required financial security in the amount of $20,000.
Okay, thank you. Seconded by Counselor Schuman. And my apologies for variances in a row, and I had that on my tongue, I guess.
Yeah.
So it is a development permit. Any other questions?
I just want to say, you know, council's very excited about all this development, so that Jim knows that we are very excited to see, too.
And Jim appreciates knowing how excited we are. You get excited under committee the whole, too.
He is excited.
Any other comments on, besides that?
Well, just that I know these folks, your worship, and just a couple of young fellows, and they just started out a little small office a couple of years ago in behind the old rights downtown, and so they're obviously, business is thriving, they're doing well, and it looks like they need more bodies, and it's a good news story.
Good, yep, exactly. Thanks for mentioning that. Okay, seeing else? All those in favor? And opposed? It's carried. Seven-eleven is report 12-094 from the Director of Infrastructure Sustainable Development, and this is for the application for Taves Ventures, 16 Collins Road. Counselor Schuman?
So I move the recommendation that report number 12-094 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the development permit application 12-14 for Taves Ventures Limited be received. Further, that staff be directed to proceed with the required notification process and authorized to issue development permit 12-14 to Taves Ventures Limited for the development of a 5,000-square-foot shop and office at 16 Collins Road upon successful completion of the required 10-day notification period and receipt of the required financial security in the amount of $10,000.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Wilbur.
Excitedly.
And she's excited.
An excited second, okay.
(laughing).
I think you've warped everybody, Jim.
I don't believe I'll mention it again, you're right.
That's council's point taken. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so all those in favor, excitedly? Anybody opposed? It's carried, thank you. So we already did eight-one and eight-two under bylaws, so we'll move to eight-three. It's report 12-087, the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, zoning amendment bylaw 4143, which is at 9703rd Street, and this is for first two readings. And there's an explanation attached with that. Counselor Kenny?
Okay.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Wilbur. Any questions or comments? Jill, okay, I'll let Jim explain.
Your worship, I should just note that this is the first time at zoning that we have required a servicing feasibility study. Often those come in regards to development permit application, as you saw with Mr. Lindberg last meeting. In this case, the upzonings that are requested, the higher density, it's not clear to us that the servicing, as it stands, will be able to meet the new demand, or what system changes might be required to meet that demand. So this motion requires the developer to do a service feasibility study prior to your public hearing, so he will have that information before you do the rezon.
Okay. Thanks for that. Any other questions then on this? Just for first two readings. So all those in favor? Opposed, and it's carried. Takes us into mayor's business. I just have to rub in, first of all, with the media here. Matt, this is mine again this year, just so you know. That was for the sportsman shoot. I was the only media personality, I guess if you want to say that, or sorry, elected official showed up with all the media. And how many were there? Matt, Jill, there was six or seven of you?
Five.
Five? All total, there was six or seven. Okay, so anyway, I was very close, this is the closest it's ever been. I only won by one shot this year. And Matthew got one shot, so good job, Matthew.
(laughing) Really?
And he was very excited, if you know Matthew, he's got some great pictures of the one that he hit.
He's a lover, not a fighter.
That's, yeah, that's right.
I just wish I wasn't on Mother's Day.
I understand he walked you at karaoke, though, your worship.
Oh, well, he definitely got me there, yeah.
At karaoke?
Fun was had by all. Anyway, that aside, the Hospital Foundation did have a very successful fundraiser, I don't remember the exact totals, but they said it was another great event, and there was, a lot of people showed up for it and had a lot of fun. So hopefully next year, if there's anybody else on council that's in town that day, please come by, it's a lot of fun.
What's that, sorry?
That's for the annual sportsman shoot they have.
And they always have it on Mother's Day.
Yes, I was reminded of that as well.
Kind of crappy.
I took my kids with me, so it was kind of...
Oh, yeah. Oh, maybe I could get my husband to go play there then.
On that, we'll go back under mayor's business. We have a couple of things to bring up or not bring up at council's discretion here. First one was under six-four, we had Mr. Coombs in attendance that was asking for a variation or a change to our signed bylaw in town. That would have to come, obviously, through council, he made the pitch this morning. Personally, that plan was put in place for a reason, but I don't see any harm in possibly making a motion to staff to come back with the background information so we can understand, because I would be a little reluctant to make any decision yea or nay right now without having that information for all of council, because I think there's a lot of background that you need to have before you decide on any changes. So I'd like to make the motion that staff come forward with a report on the background of the signed bylaw and the ramifications of changing that. Okay, so seconded by Counselor Kenny. Any discussion on that then? Yes, exactly. So all those in favor? Opposed, and it's carried. Now, the only other one that was on here was six-six. Counselor Schuman?
Yes, I would actually like to make a motion that we support this plan, endorse this plan. I know you're giving me that "aye," but I happen to believe that the province of B.C. is out and about saying they want to support families, and to me, this is an opportunity for them to put their money where their mouth is. Supporting families is not just about jobs creation, I mean, this would work into that as well, but this is truly supporting families, and I am in support of this, and I hope you all are, too.
Okay. Is that seconded by anyone? Counselor Kenny? And discussion then? Who wants to go first?
Thanks.
Counselor Malkinson?
I'm sorry for laughing, your worship, I wasn't laughing at what Ms. Schuman said.
No, that's fine.
I just, I feel like it's a bit of a political decision. Honestly, I'd like to read over their whole report before I make a decision on this.
That report was in your agenda.
Yeah, I suppose it was. I didn't assume we were going to be taking a stance on it right away during the meeting. So if Ms. Schuman provides, could I move to table this to the next meeting?
It would be, well, you table to the same meeting, but it could be a referral back or, yeah, it'd be a refer.
Sure.
Yes, through your worship, you could refer it to the following year.
Yeah.
Okay.
So a motion to refer?
Yep.
Okay. Sorry, my apologies, do referrals need seconders? Yes, I thought they did. So is there anyone seconding the referral motion?
Seconded.
Okay. Counselor Kenny? So motion referred to next meeting then for discussion, so all those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried, so we'll have it on the next meeting. Sorry, once it goes in there, you don't?
Yeah, I know. Oh, I, I misread, if I hadn't have seconded that, what would have happened?
Somebody else can second it, or it dies on the floor and we continue on.
Anyone would have went back to the first motion that I wanted to say yes to.
Yes, which you'll have a chance, I guess, next time.
Next time. I won't.
But because it was seconded and voted on, now we don't discuss it any further, it'll be the next meeting.
I didn't want to be a, sorry.
No, no, I actually, thank you for doing that.
The mayor would have gone there with us.
I would have seconded if somebody else had, so thank you.
Thank you.
Because I agree with you.
Terry?
So I have nothing.
The children don't give a ch...
Do our friends from Northern Lights College, are you keeping up with this? Because we're not.
Anyone would have went back to the first motion, but I wanted to say yes to.
Yes, which you'll have a chance, I guess, next time.
Next time. I won't.
But because it was seconded and voted on, now we don't discuss it any further, it'll be the next meeting.
I didn't want to be a, sorry.
No, no, I actually, thank you for doing that.
The mayor would have gone there without you.
I would have seconded if somebody else had, so thank you.
Thank you.
Because I agree with you.
Terry?
So, I have nothing.
The children don't give a ch...
Do our friends from Northern Lights College, are you keeping up with this, because we're not? You got that all in the notes, right? Okay. Okay, that's all I have under Mayor's Business, thank you, so Jim, diary?
Yes, your worship, as you can see, Greg is not, has not returned, so I have only limited updates for you. I just want to advise you of something that happened at Calvin Crook Center at the end of last week, there was a sub-trade who was working through the night, and our bylaw says if you do that, you have to contain the noise within the worksite, but actually, there was a compressor truck running, sounded very much like a carpet cleaner outside, and that was disturbing the neighborhood, so in the end, they had to discontinue working through the night. Don't know what effect that has on the schedule yet, I'm just giving you the heads up that that happened. And my happy report on the reclaimed water plant is that Shell is receiving product as we speak. They are filling their end reservoir in Ground Birch through the system, their system is working fine, our system is working fine. There was some discussion in emails that you may have seen regarding the permitting, so I thought I might just mention. In order to get a permit to use this reclaimed water, Ministry of Environment has to be satisfied that it meets the standards they require. At the moment, they are satisfied it meets the requirement for frac use, and the requirement for frac use is sort of self-defined. The contract between ourselves and Shell determines the quality of the reclaimed water that's necessary, and both Shell and ourselves share a responsibility to test and ensure that that fluid meets the standard, and Shell is accepting the water, it meets the standard, and that's the permit we have right now, is for frac use. In order to expand that permit so that it could be used for public use, watering flowers, washing sidewalks, irrigating sports fields, those kinds of uses, the actual product had to be available, the theoretical design in this case was not sufficient for the Ministry of Environment, because it's an organic system, and all of these Sager cells mature and ripen at a different rate, depending on growing conditions, basically. At the moment, our product has a significant amount of turbidity in it, because the cells haven't fully ripened, so now we are working on submitting what we have now to upgrade the permit. Whether or not the cells will ripen sufficiently to meet the full standard is unknown at this time, but we believe it will, that's the design, theoretical design. Whether we'll have any product available other than for fracking use seems unlikely, however. Shell will be taking their product, the residual, as you know, because you had Mr. Lindberg's presentation, the, the industry actually requires more fluid than is going to be produced at that reclaimed water facility, or to say, they will, so we expect to be basically sold out on a daily basis at the fill station there. It would be a decision for you to make if you were going to reserve some in order for it to be used for sports field irrigation, for instance. If you did that, though, your current policy is that then you would allow the fracking companies to use potable water, so whether you'd wish to do that or not, I don't know. What I am telling you is, we are trying to expand the permit, now that we have actual product to submit for testing, but we do, we are told by the industry that we're going to be fully subscribed at the fill station.
And there could be, I mean, I've talked to some of these companies, Shell included, so there could be some opportunity there of planning, stake in place, but those are things we'll have to wait, I mean, we have to get the permit, first of all, and then we'll have to go from there, right? So, thanks for that information. Counsel Schuman?
Yeah, thank you. Through your worship, to Jim, I, this past week, I was at the Zero Waste Conference put on by Recycling Council at B.C., and I was talking to someone about deconstruction, and I was talking to them about how, in the process of redoing our Performing Arts Center, that with the gold lead standards, blah, 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 that we had had some efforts to recycle and reduce the waste coming out of the Calvin Crook Center for the Arts. And I'm curious to know, he was very skeptical that we were able to actually do much with the recycling of that material, and I'm just curious to know if he was correct, or if we were able to reduce the amount of waste coming out of the deconstruction of the interior of the building.
As far as I know, we were, but I can get you a report on that, I'm not familiar with the details of it, but I haven't heard any problem in that regard, including with the extremely valuable lead point that comes with that.
Well, that, and that was my point to him, but he was quite aggressive in my face, telling me that there was no way that we could have possibly done what we, what I was assuming, what I was assuming that we had done.
Sure.
Don't, don't extend yourself too greatly to do it, I don't want to create...
There'll be a report, because of the whole lead certification requirement, there will be a report on that, and it will have been some time ago, because the selective demolition's been over for quite a while.
So you'll just be able to pull that up for me? Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, because, and it had to be verified in order to get the lead standard, and recycling is, there's different ways of recycling, so for instance, keeping it out of the landfill, so if you're able to use cement for maybe shoring up the berms at Sewer Lagoon, that can qualify sometimes as a recycling matter.
Absolutely, his, his point was more around sort of the, the drywall and things like that, so, I, I mean, it was my impression that we had gone to these efforts, and, yeah, so I'm, I'm just looking for some information, because I got that guy's email.
I know exactly what you want to do. Thanks, any questions then on the, on the diary for Jim? No? I just want to highlight again, the reclamation project, I was out last, Jim, it was Wednesday, wasn't it, I think? So Wednesday, I was out in Ground Birch for a meeting with Shell, and they were obviously very excited as well to be able to announce to the community out in Ground Birch while they were there, that the rec, that day, at eleven a.m. is when the pumps came on and water started going, so it was a pretty exciting day for Shell and for us, because as you know, we've been getting a lot of recognition and a lot of talk around, nationally, around this project, so it's nice to see that it's started up. There will be, once we get a lot of the landscaping and the building finished, then we will be doing an official opening of the project, because I know Shell wants to bring a lot of their big wigs to town to be part of this project. So on that, we'll, consent calendar for someone to move? Counsel McFadden, Counsel Kenny? All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. Jim, strategic priorities, anything up to?
Nothing new on the chart, your worship.
Okay, so question, answer, period, I don't believe anyone's signed up, Tyra?
Nobody today.
Okay, thank you. So, media, before we go into committee of the whole, is there anything that you'd like to ask at this point? No? Okay, so why don't we just move straight into committee of the whole, then, we'll get that rolling, and then we can have other media questions after the meeting, then. So I don't know if we have everybody here, so we can always...
Well, we'll get them here.
Sure, so why don't we?
You can start with Tyra.
Let's do that, let's modify it up to fifteen three. Sorry, but first, Counsel Malkinson, did you have a question?
We recess until the staff sergeant's here.
Yeah, we'll just move along, so, thanks, so Counsel, or sorry, Tyra, so Deputy Director under fifteen three.
It's more fun to go first anyways, because then another people have more exciting information, I don't have to try and top them. I can start and be the exciting.
Yours is so exciting, come on, take, take pride in your report.
Exciting stuff.
So, as you all know, corporate administration may not be the most exciting department unless you're in it, and then after those, it's quite exciting.
Yes.
It's been very busy following the adoption of the budget with multiple tenders for various departments, once the budget's adopted, the funding is there, so we go up to tender on everything from paper to vehicles to masses, we have to put those together on the website to be submitted, depending on value of documents. We have quite a few outright now, we got a few that closed on Friday, and just to update you, the in the news in the community profile, RFP, which closed on Friday, we did receive one bid for, it was an excellent bid, we haven't formally awarded it yet, but sometimes when you only get one, it's a bit problematic, but I don't see that as being an issue. The highway ditch cutting and the lot cutting is open till June first, but there was a site tour for that last week. The all-wheel-drive vehicle, we did have multiple bids, and those had to go through the green vehicle life cycle analysis costing tool, which won't be done by myself, so once someone else has done that technical work, we can go ahead and do the administration of awarding the tender and ordering the vehicle. The outdoor litter vacuum to enhance the efficiency of outdoor cleanup, we got one bid on, but I believe it was within tender, and it appears to meet specs again, that part of that steps where we work with the other departments, because I'm not really that familiar with outdoor litter vacuums.
And this is separate, that one's separate from the one that we were looking at, possibly, for downtown cleanup, this is the actual, this is actually a larger contraption.
Yeah, it kind of looks like a little bobcat, for lack of a better term, with a big hose on the front, and would just go along like an elephant, I think.
Through the ditches or whatever.
Ditches, roadways, gutters, you name it, it's quite, I think it's all-wheel-drive, so I think it's pretty universally handy.
Excellent.
We'll see when we get that thing on the road, how it works, but that's, that's the idea. And the tile and repair brought in the Kenmore Quad Center, of course, that work would be done in September, they had a site tour last week, but that one hasn't closed yet, so I do have several other tenders coming for fleet vehicles, I have quite a pile up on my desk with those documents to get out, so there'll be more coming in the weeks to come.
So, so can I ask, before you move on, then, on the RFPs, have we done, I don't think we've done it yet, the one for the engineering design for the water reservoir? Because I thought we were going to have that one by now, and I'm not, I haven't seen that one yet.
I believe that we have a contractor working on that, but maybe someone in that department can...
Through your worship, we're just getting the RFP put together.
Oh, okay.
Hopefully, we'll be getting it out in the next two or four weeks.
Excellent. The only reason why I ask is, it's not very often, but I've actually had, because maybe it's such a big issue for our community around water, I've actually had a couple of companies call me now, saying, we heard about this, when's it going up? And I said, probably soon, is all I've been saying.
Yeah, and so, something like that, we would get the specifications, like I said, I'm not that familiar with what we need to design reservoir, or what requirements are there, so someone would provide those to me, and then I would just walk them out.
Forward along, okay.
Making sure we follow all the rules, the tending rules, so. Moving on from that, I guess, I haven't heard anything from the loan, well, we're on budget, I guess, just things that came on the budget, I have not heard anything from the ministry on our loan authorization bylaws, so we have not seen the ads go out for those yet, other than the local area service project, which we do not, the ministry approved along before going out to the advertising period. That ends June twenty second for the nine fourth Avenue project, those ads have gone out, we currently have received five responses in opposition to the project out of forty-three properties, so at this point, it's still go, but they have a lot of time left to really come forward.
Okay.
And on the loan authorization, typically, it takes anywhere between ten days and two weeks, and usually, if there's a problem, they would phone right away, so you expect to get that authorization back, and we can go forward to the formal authorization process. No news, it's good news, is what I'm trying to say. Otherwise, in the report, obviously, Cindy's been very busy with travel for yourself and department heads and council, different things that are coming on, the annual report, though we don't directly do it all, Melanie's been very helpful with that process, but all the department heads are working on that, you should see something come forward on that fairly soon. And some special events coming in June, we have the students here with us, and often we have those every year, the business administration students, or...
Applied Business Technology?
Applied Business Technology, thank you. So this year, we have three students, and they'll be working throughout the organization, not just in administration, but in finance and recreation, I'm not sure they're going out to public works or not, but give them a good flavor of, of our organization, and that was a great timing for them to start today, so they could see a council meeting, the department head reports, so they get a really sort of broad understanding of all the things that we cover, and fill their minds, and then send them off, to actually do it on the ground in the different departments, so welcome, and hope you guys enjoy your time here, write something. Sometimes we learn something from them as well, right, because they have all the new systems in place, so that they've learned from their schooling, so. Well, the other thing I wanted to mention was, I was lucky enough to go to NCLGA in Prince George, which is the regional meeting of the North Central Local Government Management Association, put on an annual workshop, and I went to the pre-workshop this year, which was, I can't remember the title of it, but a primer on legislation, so basically, it was a whole day that went through all the rules that all the municipalities have to follow, and there's, everyone there, from corporate administration to engineering, to, I mean, because depending if you're the C.A.O. of a small municipality, you need to know all of them, because you're doing all the jobs, so it was excellent, they had three C.A.O.s sitting at the front and fielding questions, it was very interactive, and I felt that I learned a lot, so it was a great, great learning opportunity for me.
Good.
And I think, other than that, you can see the strategic priorities, we've sort of deferred the community engagement thing, although I did go to a session in Victoria, the city of Victoria has recently done a huge community outreach, community engagement strategy, so I've sort of got that in my back pocket, if and when we find out in June whether we're pursuing that or not, or if we're doing the policy instead, just some really good information, some really good contacts, that's often a big part of it, is that we find out someone else who's done something really great, and we can just sort of use them as a resource, so I really appreciated that. Economic development strategy, Brenda's actually been working on a bit while she's been away, so we look to probably put some ads out here in the next month, looking for people to sit on that committee, and as long as you know what we're asking them to do, we can go ahead and do that. And the energy conference is being handled by primarily Cindy and our consultants, so as far as I know, the planning is going quite well on that, we're doing the law, registration and trade show and everything, she did attend the trade show in Fort St. John, the only comment I heard from that was that traffic was quite low, and she attributed that to the fact that there was twenty-five thousand entry fee to that trade show.
Oh, my goodness.
So, that, that won't be the case at all.
Twenty-five bucks?
Yeah. Unless there's any questions, that's my report for today.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions then on that?
Are you going to be singing at Jobface?
Absolutely not.
[laughing]
Maybe Matt Baines will. Okay, seeing none, then we'll, maybe we'll be jumping around a little bit, I think, today on the committee of the whole, but I see Shorty, Fire Chief, just came in, so we'll, I know he's probably busy, busy, so we'll jump back to five, fifteen two, and welcome his report. Good morning, Shorty.
Good morning. Hope everybody enjoyed the weekend.
Yeah, aside from the big plume of smoke that went from a quarter section of land...
Yeah, actually, I was going to talk about that today, not that particular one, but there is a open fire ban in the Prince George Fire Area, so that includes us, so category two, which is basically brush cleaning type of stuff, is not allowed to burn, so. Can't see me, I need to sit higher?
I have nothing to do with your name, but I can see over there.
He's been raising his seat up.
You know, if I wanted to get harassed, I could have just stayed next door.
Well, that's why we had you now, so you can get back over.
Okay. So, yeah, so it's, on the weekend, that plume of smoke was, a farmer decided to burn a portion of his field off, and a hundred and forty acres later, the fire was under control, so if there's any message out there that we can get, is, is, don't burn, we can't ban campfires, those kind of things, but open burning, we can. So we're not allowing anybody in our fire protection area to burn right now, other than campfires.
So on that, when somebody does not follow the guidelines, what happens? What recourse or, what happens is...
Depends, if they're within the city limits, we do have some ways to collect the money for the response, so to speak. In the regional district, we're working with the regional district right now, and find out how we can do it in that area, because we've had two fires in the last week, the same thing, we had one individual that decided to burn a bunch of garbage, and one individual, like, on the weekend, that burned a fairly large chunk of field, so.
Yeah.
So we're working with the regional district, trying to figure out how to, how to do that.
Okay, thanks.
But other than that, it's been busy, yeah, grass season is picking up, we've, I don't know, I didn't run the exact numbers as far as grass fires, but they are picking up, and April, May is usually our busy months for those, because it's not quite green yet.
Well, and, and you know, looking at your report for April, it's, grass fires is the top one on that one, it actually beat out motor vehicle accidents, which is usually the highest, so, don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but I think your point is well-taken, that we need to make sure people realize with the fire ban, and we've seen it time and time again, where somebody wants to have just a small fire, and believe it or not, for some reason, people don't think it gets windy here in Dawson Creek, but the fires get out of control, so.
Yeah. Wind-driven fires are, are a tough one to fight, that happened in the subdivision there a couple of weeks ago, it was the same thing, it turned out to be a small fire, and then the wind picked up on it and just ran with it, so.
Yeah. Any questions or comments then from council?
Shorty?
No? Yeah, I'll...
One more comment to make is, one of our longtime firefighters has decided to retire, Ted Cousins has put his paperwork in to retire, so June seventh is his last official day of work, he's thirty years in this department, so congratulations to Ted, and, and moving forward, so now he gets to get busy farming, I guess.
You're going to advise him on different fire bans before he leaves, I'm sure.
He doesn't know them.
Okay, well, thanks a lot, Shorty, for coming in, and wish the guys next door well.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. So we'll move, we kind of feel like we're going backwards today, but we'll move to fifteen one, we have Myla, Staff Sergeant, in attendance, good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Thanks for coming over.
Oh, thank you.
And thanks for the report that we have here.
Yeah. So, I guess I'll start with, I'll just sort of go through it in the same way that, that I've written it out, we have noticed sort of an increase in the cocaine-related drug activity here over the last little while, over the period of time that we've been reporting that, and, so that has sort of shown itself in the form of some, a small number of fairly violent offenses, for which we haven't been able to generate prosecutions, primarily as a result of the fact that our victims haven't been cooperative, which is sort of the norm in relation to those files, so it's an indication to us that we're going to have to look at, at stepping up that level of enforcement in that area, which we're in the process of doing, and it's more or less just a heads up, just to kind of give you an idea, that's a trend that we're kind of observing right now, so. that we're kind of observing right now, so, um, hopefully the, uh, the street end of that crime will be sort of mitigated by the bikes, which we've had the bikes out and, and, uh, they're, they've been, uh, working on that. One of the things that came up, uh, it was in the paper, and I think I might as well, uh, a-address it, was, uh, there was, um, an article about the homicide at the Encana Event Center, and, uh, unfortunately, uh, you know, with, uh, we, we just don't have, uh, a lot of new news in, in relation to that. We're still waiting for a pathologist's report, and, uh, and, not to put the blame on the pathologist, the pathologist in turn is waiting for a toxicology report, so th-there's just an administrative process that's far lengthier than any of us, especially the family would like, and that's just something that we're, um, that we're, they're working for, and, uh, we made some calls, but there's sort of a limit to the amount that you can kind of accelerate that process, so that's kind of, kind of where we're at on that. Um, we've got a couple of new recruits, uh, uh, one, uh, I believe may have worked his first shift, yeah, will have worked his first shift, and that's about it, and then we've got, uh, one that's worked a couple of blocks, so we've got a few new, new ones coming. Um, so, uh, it'll be a relatively busy summer in terms of training people, so that's, uh, uh, that's kind of, that's always fun. They're quite enthusiastic and happy to be here and so on. And actually, and, uh, both of them come from agricultural communities on the East Coast, and so they had actually specifically requested Dawson Creek, so they got their first wish, which is kind of a good thing, so, um, and, uh...
Always better first than last wish.
Yeah, (laugh) yeah. No, they're actually delighted, which is kind of nice, like, they feel like they won that scratch and win or something, so. Um, and we had, uh, what else? We've had a few, uh, a few break-in enters to outbuildings and, and RVs, and I think that might be sort of, uh, similar to our, our previous. We had a little bit of a spate of, uh, car problems, uh, some time ago, and we identified some suspects, and, uh, the, the situation stabilized, uh, for a while, and we've noticed an, an increase in that trend, so I think that, uh, this is probably a case of, uh, two people creates a crime wave, uh, and, uh, we're, uh, working to, to create some patrols and, uh, and some situations to get that issue resolved. Um, and...
(mn)
There was a fairly large number of people charged with impaired driving. I think that's more a focus of, uh, or more a reflection on the initiatives that our members have been taking in regards to getting, uh, impaired drivers off the road. Uh, it's still something that we, that we're, uh, that we're focused on to, uh, to an extent, and, uh, um, told, uh, we didn't have any, we didn't have any files that were, uh, that were truly high-profile. We had a number of files that were kind of important, uh, files, but, but nothing, uh, nothing earth-shattering, so I guess that's pretty much
Good.
The update. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Good, well, thanks. And one of the things I always, you know, one of my personal things I like to highlight is the bike patrol, and I saw some people out
Yeah.
Last week, driving around, so has nothing to do with the nice weather, but it's that time of year.
Yeah, (laugh) yeah, it kind of makes it a fun way to work, so, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, so that's great to see, so I appreciate the fact that we're continuing on with that.
Yeah, that, actually, they appreciate being able to do it, so it works out really well for everybody, so, yeah.
Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, thanks for your report this morning. Um, I've been getting some calls and messages around, uh, the people speeding through, um, you know, the, the 30-kilometer zones. Um, I wonder if you could speak to that, if there's any initiatives happening to sort of stake out those areas, maybe, and, and, uh, I know the one in particular is down on 110th, which our, uh, Y's CAO did warn us that that was actually going to happen once the new pavement went down, and
Right.
It resembles a racetrack type of thing, so, uh, I just wondered if there was any, you know, is, is it gonna be Speed Zone Month or anything like that happening soon?
Well, we hadn't actually declared it Speed Zone Month, but (laugh)...
We could.
But it's certainly so, yeah, it's certainly something that, uh, I'll definitely, um, I can definitely pass that on, and I can get some directed enforcement towards the school zones or the, or the playground zones, uh, in particular, just so that we can, uh... One of the things, um, it probably wouldn't hurt to mention, uh, as, as you probably know, uh, we did get, uh, authorization, uh, through, through the city to, to look at hiring another, uh, member here, and, um, and, uh, our, our intention in regards to the deployment of that member was exactly, uh, to use that member in the capacity of a municipal traffic enforcement member. So, currently, what we have right now is we've got, uh, a constable that is attached to one of the watches, and she is able to focus on traffic enforcement as part of her responsibilities, but I agree with you, and I, and we, and we feel the same way, that we think that there is enough volume of traffic-related work, that it does kind of merit having somebody, um, additionally assigned full-time to that, to that role, and so that is our intention in regards to how we roll that out, and so we've had some discussions with staffing in terms of how we categorize that position, but that's exactly what our intention is, is to, is to make that person a, a full-time, uh, traffic resource, that will be focusing on speed zones and, uh, and in the evening shifts, we'll be focusing on the impaired driving and that type of thing that happens, uh, as well, so.
Great, that's, that's awesome news, and I'll, I'll relay that back to all the people that have been calling me.
Perfect, sounds good.
On that, uh, staff is, how many, and I think it's four, but how many members are on shift at a time on the roads?
Yeah, it, uh, four would be, four would be about right. Um, the, uh, the watch commanders, uh, tend to find that the amount of time they have to spend reviewing the files pretty much, uh, takes them off the road, I think, for the majority of the shift, and, uh, you know, and then the watch, and then the watch members themselves are, are out, uh, are out, are out patrolling, so what this will do is it will kind of equalize, so there'll be, there'll be four, four watches of five that will be in a position to, uh, to focus on their, their...
Yeah, the reason why I bring that up is, you know, you have people in the community who obviously say, you know, "Where are the RCMP? I just saw this guy go speeding down the road."
Right.
We have, what is it, 160 kilometers of road in the city of Dawson Creek, and basically three people on the road at a time, so...
That's right, yeah, and, you know, and, and quite often, uh, they may be en route or returning from a higher profile or higher priority incident that kind of makes it impossible for them to take enforcement action, so it's only a tip of the iceberg that we're actually able to touch, and, and, and we, we know that. Um, but I think that's one of the reasons that kind of speaks to the necessity of, of having a full-time municipal traffic member, so.
Excellent. You know, that is good, so. Well, thank you. Any, Counselor Malcolmson?
Uh, just for somebody else's sake, I wanted to mention 110th Street as well, just with Schuman there, so I can go back to him and say, "Yes, I did mention..."
Okay.
(laugh) I'll certainly make sure and pass that on to the members.
And remind them that it's pretty easy, even if your speedometer doesn't work, because there's a nice flashing sign on 110th telling you what your speed is, so.
Complaint that I got was that that actually encourages speeders, you know, because they want to see how high they can make it, but, uh...
Yeah. (laugh) There's probably some truth to that.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, that would be demographics of age.
Yes.
That's true, that's true.
(laugh) Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, thanks, staff, for coming in. Appreciate all the efforts.
Thanks very much. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So move on to 15-4, Chief Financial Officer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So you have my report in front of you. It's not as exciting as the last couple of reports, but, uh, um, we just basically, uh, give you the numbers on the Calvin Creek Art Center and finishing up the water reclamation project, and once that project is ongoing, we'll probably be reporting stats as far as flow goes, but both projects, uh, are on budget. And, uh, basically, we haven't started too much of our strategic priorities, just finishing up all the year-end budget filing. Still have the Soffe report to do and some other year-end reports, so we're gonna finish those off before we hit the strategic priorities full force. But, um, I do have some stats on property tax collection I wanted to share with you. Um, I did an interview with the, um, media last week about encouraging residents to come in early and pay their taxes, so notices went out May 14th, and so we're just at the beginning of the stage, 11 days into the process. There was 5,385 notices sent out this year compared to 5,345 last year, so 40 more notices, so it's just the growth of the community, but, um, we're comparable as far as receipts, about $2 million, and we've had 386 homeowner grants, uh, received, and that was one of the things that I said to the media last week, is that we encourage everybody, um, to come in and fill out their homeowner grant, and we're working on, um, an online app to get that, so that makes it easier for residents. And we also have two property tax deferments forms, and that's comparable to last year. Um, so everything's going pretty smoothly to this point.
And a reminder, if you don't hit the June, July 3rd or 4th deadline, it's a 10%
Absolutely.
Penalty that we have no control over, that's, or discretion, thank you.
Discretion to waive, yeah, yeah. And we'll, we'll say that a couple more times before the July 3rd, uh, date comes, comes forward, but, uh, yeah, just encourage everybody to pay whatever way that is easiest for them. We do not take Visa, MasterCard, or any credit card, but, uh, there's, uh... There's all your options, though. Yeah. (laugh) Well, some people like it. The other thing that, that gets difficult for some people, they come in to pay it by debit, and
Yes.
Their bill is higher than their, um, limit, so we just encourage everybody to check their limit before they come and...
Yeah, 'cause a lot of people have like a thousand dollar a day limit
Yeah.
On a transaction or something.
Yeah, but the finance staff is really good, and, and, uh, if anybody has any questions, just call them. They're very helpful, and, uh, yeah.
Good, thanks, Counselor Schuman, and then Kenny.
Yeah, thanks, Shelley. So my question is around the tax deferment. Um, would these be senior citizens that are deferring taxes? Because I know, was it a few years back, there was another, another thing brought in where
Yeah, there was...
Young people could do it also.
There was a hardship application a couple of years ago, but that's no longer available.
Oh, okay.
But there's, there's, um, they're provincial programs, and there's two different, um, applications that you can do. One's a senior, uh, application, the other one is, um, parents with children under 18.
Yeah, that's the, that's what I was curious, if
Yeah, so...
Those were being utilized.
Yeah, I don't think we have any of those right now, but, um, if anybody's interested in, in knowing the details of that, call City Hall or, or, um, talk to Tanya, she's really familiar with the application.
Which one is that again, sorry?
That, uh, parents with children under 18 can apply, but there's specifics, and I don't know
Yeah.
The specifics of the application, but, you know, if you're in, in a hard way this year, you can certainly check into it. Um, it is gonna cost you more in the end, because you have interest in all that stuff, but it might be, you know, something that will help you out in the short term, so, yeah. Call City, call City Hall.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Kenny.
I was just, uh, gonna comment on it. It's really nice having that automatic deduction there for your taxes there every month, so that when tax season hits, you don't, you don't miss a day.
Yeah, we do have a lot of people that take advantage of that pre-authorized payment program, and it's a really good way to, um, manage your cash flow to the end of the, the tax season, so some people take advantage of that, too, and, uh, you know, some people can't do that, but it's, it's a really good way to not be surprised at the end, and, "Oh, my taxes are due," kind of thing, so.
Okay, any other, any other questions, then, for Shelley? And it's all about money, so it is exciting, don't think it's not, so.
I just haven't figured out a way to make it all exciting.
For those of us that like money.
That may just be me.
Next time, we will show some excitement.
Okay, I will show some excitement.
Yes. Thank you very much, so.
(inaudible).
Well, in Campbell River, worship, they did a 13.6% tax increase. All their financial reports were darn exciting.
We don't want that kind of excitement.
That's, yeah, different kind of excitement. So I was gonna vary the agenda, but I guess we'll let Kevin go next, since he's there, so, uh...
He's excited to get it there in the college report.
Good morning.
Good morning. Beautiful weekend. It looks like it's gonna be a beautiful week. Uh, I'll touch quickly on, uh, a couple of reports I, I put forward. Um, always the good news story is the development that's occurring in our community. Uh, you'll see that development permits are right there with what, uh, well, slightly ahead of last year's numbers. As of the end of April, we had just a few dollars shy of $10 million in, uh, building permits, so, strong start, and, you know, I know, based on discussions we've had with, uh, the building inspectors downstairs, the, the month of May hasn't really been any quieter, so it's been, uh, it's gonna be another very busy year, and it's, it's good to see. Uh, the recurring question that I get is, "What about Wendy's?"
Yes.
Yes.
What about Wendy's?
Um, uh...
This could be a "What about Wendy's?" Facebook site.
All indications point to that they're, they're still coming, and, uh, the discussions that we've had with the contractors, that, uh, they had to change some of the building plans, and that in order to do that, it was, I guess, the bureaucracy in Wendy's is even more than maybe some government, so it took some time.
Well, and there was some modifications due to access off of Vade Street, I believe, for the drive-through and highways permission, so it's kind of slowed things down a bit.
Yeah, so they've been working on that, so, uh, until I hear otherwise, I still believe that, uh, it's coming forward, so.
Good. Spicy chicken burger, here it come.
So, uh, and on the development side, as well as, um, as you saw, you know, with some of the variance permits earlier, and, uh, regarding to subdivisions, we're, we're seeing a lot of, uh, interest, um, not only in the subdivisions that are underway, there's obviously gonna be some growth in those. We know that the industrial park out at the airport, uh, some of the other residential subdivisions in town are gonna continue to grow, and, and we've got, uh, the Windridge property that is, you know, looking at moving forward, and, and also at the Park Hill, they're talking about it, whether it happens or not, but it, it's certainly poised to be a very, very busy summer, so. Um, on to public works and, and engineering. Obviously, uh, on the engineering side, things have kicked off, is that busy time, so, uh, we're getting swamped with BC1 calls and, uh, all the weekend warriors that are out there doing their, their work on the weekends, so we're, we're kept very busy with that, and getting prepared for what looks to be a very busy summer in capital works with, uh, should everything go forward.
Yeah.
Paving programs, sidewalks, some underground infrastructure, so that'll be very busy.
On the locating aspect, um, one of the things I find as a telling sign for the community as well is, it's amazing how many people are renovating, putting up fences, paving driveways, reciting homes, beautifying their properties, uh, that's a, a great sign to see in a community, so. Uh, all the people are spending the time and efforts on that, we wanna thank them as well.
Yes, certainly, it's, it's been good.
Did you want to say something, Counselor Schuman, on that?
Uh, not...
Oh, go ahead.
Kinda. Um, so, I've been learning a little bit about waste lately. (laugh) A little bit of a learning curve for me, but, um, do we have a deconstruction, do we give out deconstruction permits? Do we do anything around the deconstruction we do?
Well, I guess it depends on defined deconstruction, demolition permits we do issue.
Yeah, so I think that deconstruction is a little bit different
Yes.
Where you're aiming to reduce the waste hitting the landfill with other options.
And we had actually looked at that a few years ago
Yeah.
With the old Centennial Pool.
Yes.
Um, and at that time, I think we had a couple of prices come in and exceeded the budget, and, and it was kind of held off at that time, but we had looked at exactly that, instead of demolishing, deconstructing, and, and able to take, you know, each component and reuse if necessary, recycle, whichever it would be, so.
Yeah, so I was, um, fascinated to learn about the city of Vancouver. I know they're a little bit different than ourselves, but, uh, just a little bit, but, uh, they do a whole, um, process around deconstructing. I mean, I think they do have demolition as well, but the deconstructing and, and, uh, you know, at the end, if you've deconstructed appropriately and you've recycled all of the recyclable, um, things within there, then they, they can come back and show that they've had their signatures and everything alongside everything that was recycled, and then they can perhaps get their deconstruction permit fee back
Right.
Um, as a little incentive to, to keep things out of the, out of the ways.
I suspect that what drives that is what it costs to take things to the landfill.
Yeah.
And, you know, you, over time, I suspect you'll see things, you know, similarly happen in other regions as, as, uh, landfills become more expensive to acquire land and operate.
Yeah.
Um, obviously, the incentive to not take it there in the first place will be what, what'll drive that.
Right. So I did have another question, um, with regards to the letter we received from Marilyn Balak about her backflow issues.
Yes.
Um, will you be responding to her and, and, I mean, she's sort of laid it out here, but if you have any comments on that...
Yeah, what our, what our plan is, is to, to bring a, a report forward to council, kind of outlining, um, how common or uncommon this is. I, I can give you anecdotally that in my time with the city, I mean, it does happen occasionally, and there's various reasons why it may or may not, and we'll delve into that in the report, and we'll get some information, as well as we'll compare, uh, a little bit of information on maybe as well as we'll compare a little bit of information on maybe what happens in other communities and see if, you know, I would like to think it's not isolated to Dawson Creek. I think, you know, the process that we use is not dissimilar to, to other places. It's usually there's some, some reasons to why this happens and whether it's infrastructure on our side or the homeowner's, but we'll, we'll get all that information and bring it forward.
Awesome. Thanks, Kevin.
You betcha.
That's okay. You wanted to continue on?
Yeah, I, really, the, the one other thing I wanted to touch on was, was water because, you know, it is, it is a very popular topic around, around here. Last week, or the week prior, I guess, it was Water Week and a lot of events went on. And I know a number of councillors were out busy with, with Reg and John doing various tours and, and out into the community. So that was, that was great to see and, and I hope the response was good. So that just leads into some of the discussions around operational water use. And I know we had a question last week on washing of sidewalks and how much water was used and, and just more so about the perception of the water being used. So I got a little bit of information from, from Darcy on that and also Sean on some, some operational use. And washing sidewalks, I think this year over two week period, we used about forty-seven thousand gallons of water. So that's a significant amount of water. But if we keep that in perspective of, in a, in a typical summer day, outdoor watering in this community, and this would be prior to us having our water conservation bylaw, we used to see numbers spike in the range of five hundred thousand gallons a day. So over two weeks, what we used to wash sidewalks is about ten percent of what the community used on outdoor watering in a single day. So although it is a significant amount of water, and I don't want to downplay that, in, in, in the scope of the big picture, it is, it is fairly small compared to what outdoor watering consumes. So, and you know, the hope is if we, we change that permit, amend it down the road, we'll be able to using it for that exact same thing and for sanitary flushing and whatnot. But I just wanted to highlight that for you if you have any questions around that.
Can you go again on the, so you're saying forty-seven thousand gallons? That's, that's one thing, but the, and I know you've done this before in past years, explain why we use water and not just sweep the sidewalk.
Yeah, I, I think the, the thing, the important aspect there is, is that the material that's used by the Ministry of Transportation or CRS for, for maintaining the, the roads in the winter is, is a different material than we use. We use a, a small aggregate that you can broom off fairly easily. The ministry requires a sand which has more silt, sand, dirt in it, and it actually will pancake onto the, the sidewalks and sweeping alone won't, won't bring it off.
Yeah. We do sweep.
Yes.
The, the sidewalks we wash are Eighth Street and Alaska Avenue and the handicap ramps in the downtown area, which are its intersections. So no business really takes responsibility for that sidewalk. We sweep all of those first to get off all the loose aggregate and that sort of thing. But the sweepers mounted on the trackless won't get at the pancaked silt, sand mix. So your alternatives there are water, which is what we use, or I suppose you could use an air compressor and try to force it off with air. You're gonna raise a ton of dust if you do that and you're gonna take a lot longer than the ten days that we take. So we use water because it's the most efficient thing to do. We use it because it's the least expensive thing to do. And it is, it's an amount of water, but it is not a significant amount of water in the grand scheme of things. The, the main arterial sidewalks, this actually plays into the proclamation you had this morning. It is very difficult for, we don't do this just for cosmetic purposes. It's very difficult for someone on a motorized wheelchair. He used those sidewalks prior to us removing that pancake dirt. It's not just the loose rock that impedes something like that motorized transport. We need to get that pancake stuff off. It, it makes it impassable for motorized wheelchairs, but it also damages the sidewalk by dropping the salt on the top of the sidewalk. So we need to get rid of it one way or another.
Yeah. So I've got quite a few hands up. So Councilor Malickson first?
Um, I don't want to be, I don't want to change the topic quickly, but I wanted to ask if there's any update about the situation at Chamberlain Drive?
Uh, nothing new to report on that. The sewer master plan is moving along. We've, as part of that, there's been some flow monitoring devices installed, I think three or four of them in various spots in manholes in the community that the consultant engineer determined were key points to gather information. That coupled with a rain gauge that we have up on, we've just recently installed on the top of City Hall that will correlate rainfall events and obviously flows within there. And that's gonna certainly help paint a picture of what's going on with these mains. And so it's moving forward. I wish I could say it was moving forward quicker for, for those residents' sake, but.
I think last month you said it was, would probably be fall before we had some.
Yeah, before.
This fall before we actually have a report.
Yeah, the proposal from, or what we asked for in our proposal call for the sewer master plan was that the consultants would come to council and present in November of this year with a completed plan and, and you know, a view looking forward.
Okay. Councilor McFadden, you had your hand up?
No, I was asking you, worship.
Okay. Thanks, Councilor Schuman.
My question, and I'm not opposed to using the water to clean the sidewalks. I realize and understand that it's very important to do so. Do we use the raw water or the treated water?
We do use treated water because we have access to it at our facility. But we are metering it also. Now we do certainly have that accounting of where it's going and what it's being used for. And that's certainly opened, opened our eyes to where it goes. Because prior, we just had the connection and we didn't meter our own water, but we're certainly becoming more accountable on that side of it.
And we don't have access yet to raw water.
Well, we.
Right? Or you're talking raw water upstream?
I think go suck it out of our roof.
We could take a truck all the way out to the Kiskatnaw and load up, well, we could go to Harold Hansen Reservoir and load up there and drive back. We're not doing that.
I was just wondering if there's a, I mean, I know the perception out there is that we're wasting the water, but for myself, I was thinking maybe the raw water is less, less of a cost associated with it as opposed to treated water. I don't know.
Yeah.
But then you'd have the trucking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
If the community is of the belief that maintaining these sidewalks in an accessible fashion is a waste of water, they can communicate that to you and we'll try the water or the air compressor. I believe then you will get a great deal more complaints than you're getting now. That would be my professional advice to you.
I agree.
But I can't tell you that it is a waste of time to render those sidewalks operable. It's not.
No.
I, I don't disagree.
Okay.
Anything else?
Anything else for you to highlight there, Kim?
I think that's good. We got some people waiting in the wings here that I know they're, Barry's anxious to introduce Matt to you, so.
Good. So any other questions for Kevin then? No? Okay. Well, thanks very much then.
Perfect, thank you.
So fifteen six. Yeah, Barry here, Director of Community Services, who I believe is gonna do some official final introductions.
I thought I'd just introduce him as my bodyguard, but.
Yeah.
I won't talk much at all this week in regards to, I'm gonna just, if there's questions and follow-up to the report that, that's been submitted, I'll thank Duncan for I was away last week and put it forward. There are a number of, of key factors in there that, sort of the transition into the busy summer months around the beautification and our rinks being updated and ready for the fall. There are some, some numbers and if you have questions around that, certainly after I'm done. But I think I wanted to spend most of it and, and jump forward to our strategic planning and priorities, which have been very busy lately. The user fee policy, as we all know, Brian will be in, picking him up at the airport this afternoon. And he's gonna meet with Shelley later this afternoon. And our staff, we're doing a, a working supper tonight with, with Brian through that to ensure the numbers that we're bringing forward to council tomorrow are as accurate as they can be at this time. And we've got a working date as well with council tomorrow morning and senior management will be invited to that to, to get the bigger perspective as well as we try and support Shelley from the bigger picture of user fees and branching out from just Recreation Department. So that'll be pretty critical. And wrapping up tomorrow, we've got fifteen not-for-profit interest groups coming tomorrow night to the Ken Arena. And if there's any other groups that are interested, you know as councillors that would like to hear that presentation, certainly they've all been invited. But if you know anyone else that might, from a community perspective, be interested in some of that, please do. And any councillor that would like to attend that meeting tomorrow night at seven at the Ken Arena, I think Cindy is also invited to us for that as well. Okay? And we're, we're quite excited. I met with Brian last Tuesday when I was in Vancouver and he thinks we've got the majority of that prepared and ready to go. The U18 National Women's Championship, I, I updated Jim very briefly this morning. There's been some significant changes and at the, this year's AGM and Hockey Canada has shifted some of their funding priorities. And as we may or may not know, Hockey Canada had a significant financial return at the World Juniors of the Edmonton Calgary. And in return, most hockey associations across Canada are benefiting from that. And one of them was championship play. The streamline to that will increase our, our grant from Hockey Canada and also increase some of the offset budgets that we had prepared originally in regards to challenges around accommodation, travel and meals. We all are very aware of that accommodations are a little higher here than most of Canada in relationship to hosting a national championship. So that's gonna certainly help us with our budgets and, and in turn allow us to be more flexible with some of our ticket pricing. So some of that is, is all good news from our perspective and I'll be updating the chairs later today and, and meeting with the committee as we go through that. And third, and, and probably the most important, and very excited, and I'll turn this over, Kevin, myself, working with BC Hydro and, and a number of, the mayor was involved in the process of, of working through this. Very excited this morning and it's, I apologize that he's, he's a little late coming. He's been with us, I think, almost a month now. But Matthew is, is with us and we call him Matt for short and he's been a great addition. And I think what we found very quickly is that he's been hired as our community energy and corporate manager through our grant process with BC Hydro and, and that one-year contract position. And we've certainly seen in one month what Matt can bring to the plate. And I'm gonna turn it over, but without saying that when we did this process, we had, on the first go-around prior to Christmas, we, we didn't get a great pool of candidates and we felt that maybe just Christmas was improper timing. The second pool, when we reached out, was extremely talented. And Matthew had a great interview and did a lot of work on Dawson and, and what, what I wanted to share with you is, was, was in his references and, and Matthew basically is coming out of his master's program. It's not the doctor yet, it's just the master.
They were told off in the doctor's.
And with basically, when we did his review with his, his university, he was in the top one percentile of his class. But, but that's pretty impressive in the sense of academics. But what he brings to us as a team that, you know, how he relates to community, how he can speak to people, some of the preliminary work he's done for us already, we consider this a steal. If getting Matt for the year can do what we've set out in our program, I, I think we're gonna see some, some cost savings and some things that are gonna bring some of the dashboard work at the sustainability level. But certainly when he goes anywhere and represents the city, we're, we're well taken care of. So Matthew, I wanted to welcome you and give you the opportunity to say a few words. And I'm sure council will have a few questions of you as well.
Welcome. Wow, thank you very much. Barry, I haven't blushed like that in quite a long time. Appreciate it. First thing I'd, I'd like to mention is, if this is gonna become a regular occurrence, I just want to put a request in for a slightly larger desk.
Or Barry could go back to his weightless loss program too.
Oh, that, that's not what I'm getting at. No, no.
He can be the piece that you're there. It's not about you, Barry.
Apparently you, you've offended Jim in the, at the conference in Victoria somehow. I don't want to get into that. I just want to say thank you to everybody here at City Hall for, for having such a warm welcome reception. It's, it's an experience coming to a new place, especially being this far away from home and everyone here has been really welcoming. And I've had a chance to meet a few of the councillors out in the community and it's wonderful to see how involved everyone is and what a good reception this town, you know, gives to somebody new coming in. So thank you very much. I really appreciate that. I know it's been a long morning, so I'll, I'll try not to take too much of your time. I'll just give you a brief rundown of, of sort of what I've been up to for the, for the month that I've been here and what I'd like to look forward to in the year to come and hopefully the years to come. So far, I've had the pleasure of working with Barry and Kevin quite closely to get up to speed on a lot of the sustainability initiatives that you've, you've put in place so far. And I'm really impressed. It's a lot of fun to, to be part of that or to come into that sort of momentum. It, it really feels good. In addition to that, we've also got some great connections up in Fort St. John, for example, with Marty. Barry took me up there a couple of weeks ago and had a chance to sit down with him. He's a couple of years into the role, so it's really helping sort of to bounce some questions off of him and get some feedback. It's really easing my transition, which is great. It's not easy when you have five bosses. I currently have about three at BC Hydro and at least two here, so I'm still trying to get my head around that. Also, we've got a great support through Pembina. Also, an incredible wealth of, of information and support so far. So I'm really looking forward to continuing to work with Claire at Pembina. This role is relatively new for BC Hydro. They're, they're trying to fit me into both the corporate side of things and the community side. So there's some policy stuff that I'm gonna be looking at over the next year on the community side, as well as some more corporate-related stuff. So energy management in specific buildings and that sort of thing. So as it stands right now, I'm, I'm looking at trying to get a grasp on, on our sort of energy consumption in individual buildings and try to highlight the outliers and look to those for, for opportunities for retrofits and that sort of thing so we can identify the best return on our investments there. To that note, we've already got some lighting retrofits identified in our arenas, which I'm really excited about moving forward throughout the summer. That's sort of the, the first order of business on that one. In addition to that, there's some opportunities in terms of streetlights. The technologies have progressed so much in recent years that a lot of municipalities are, are moving towards those LED technologies, for example. And there's huge potential savings. So we're, we're already investigating that. We've got a couple of samples on the way that we look forward to, to testing out in our community and hopefully we'll go from there. Yeah, I won't get into too much more detail on that sort of stuff, but that's just gives you an idea of what we're looking at so far. On the community side, a number of the policies that we're hoping to work towards, both as far as the, the city's priorities and BC Hydro's, include a policy to promote ten percent renewable energy and into, into any of our new construction, which I think is fantastic. There's already work underway by, on behalf of the city, requiring energy labeling on new buildings in Dawson Creek, which is, is progressing as well, which is great. There is potential to develop a, a special development permit area to optimize solar energy. So we're, we're just in the very beginning stages of identifying what sort of potential we have there. And I'll keep you posted on the developments. That's relatively new. It's just come to my attention. And as well, BC Hydro would like me to look at advancing district heating, combined heat and power and renewable energy projects. So those will be some of the things that I'll be working on throughout the next year.
And you'll get smiles from everybody.
I'm just seeing nods and, yeah. And so far, everyone I've talked to in regards to any of this, no matter what their role is, they've just been incredibly supportive and excited about all the potential out there. So it's, it's a lot of fun. Thank you.
Good. Council, any, any questions? Barry?
Just to Barry, kudos to your staff and Melanie for organizing the Water Week. I had a chance to go out with Reg to two or three or four schools and he put together a great program that was very well received and he's, obviously he's very enthusiastic about his work. So thank you for that. They did a great job.
Pass that on. I think when Matt referred, I think Mel was one of the five bosses. That's all good news as well.
She's my boss on the basement floor.
You have one per floor, do you?
That's right.
Did you have a question, Councilor Schuman?
Yeah, I don't have a question. I just wanted to officially welcome Matt. This whole energy thing is near and dear to my heart. And of course, I, I believe that, that the best way we can get out there and reduce our consumption is to make sure that we have the most efficient buildings. And, and I'm glad to hear you were talking a little bit about the district energy piece, which also interests me a lot. So welcome to Dawson Creek and hope you enjoy it here. And I look forward to all the great things that are gonna come from having your position.
Thank you very much.
So Matt, you said far away from home, somewhat different. Where, can I ask where that is?
I'm originally from Vancouver Island in Victoria.
So you're not that far from home.
Same province, right?
Same province, yeah. It's a bit of an expensive flight unfortunately.
Yes, it can be. We know that. Any other comments then? No? Okay. Well, thanks very much for coming in. And Matt, again, welcome and thanks for everything you're doing. We look forward to see what happens over the next year at least.
Thank you very much.
And last on our committee, the whole, we have, but not least, April Moy from Northern BC Tourism Association. Sorry, I was gonna, I almost hit Narata, but I know it's all changed.
We slip up every now and then. Thank you very much. I'd like to, first of all, officially welcome Samantha Gibbault as our new tourism development coordinator. And Sam, Samantha started last Tuesday. So we've, we've had a very busy week with orientation and she has a very large to-do list. Did you want to say a few words at all?
Yeah, sure. I actually hail from Ottawa. So I'm a bit, I beat him. I'm further away. That's an expensive flight. But I actually worked up in Fort St. John and tourism for three summers. So I was lucky enough to sort of build a foundation in the Peace Region, especially with tourism, understanding the benefits of the Alaska Highway being a main artery up. And then, of course, I was finishing my studies at the same time. So I've taken a BBA in international business. So my skills in that are obviously new. I only graduated a couple of months ago, but I'm really excited to build my career up here. And it's more of a long-term thing, but yeah, build Dawson Creek and make it a gateway to community and everything like that. So.
Awesome. Welcome.
Thank you.
So I realize that it has been a long day for all of you, but I thought that perhaps I would, actually before I just. I would, um, uh, actually before I just, uh, briefly summarize a couple of highlights in the report, I do also want to acknowledge the work of, uh, with Kelty and Joyce for getting us through the few months that, uh, since Dustin left us. And it was really quite a, an honor to be working with, with the team. And they did some fantastic work. Um, so as you, um, were, uh, saw today, we're kicking off the visitor season. Uh, just to a little number, we like to keep in mind that we welcome fifteen thousand, uh, over fifteen thousand visitors to the, um, to the visitor center last, uh, season. And so we're always trying to, uh, up those numbers. Uh, we're not too sure what the season brings for us this year with the price of fuel, um, bit of the, still suffering from the downturn of the economy. Um, but, uh, after personally attending, uh, the shows in, um, in Arizona, there are still those Americans that want to make that trek up the highway. Uh, and of course, we like to keep in mind that, um, over fifty percent of our visitors are BC residents. So we'll see how that, how that transpires. Uh, the visitor center, uh, opens, uh, is, is open seven days a week now, um, from eight to five-thirty and then, um, as, um, oh, in June, in June and August from eight to, eight to five-thirty. So it's still opening up, uh, nine to five-thirty, uh, now, but, um, we, uh, we do open for the longer periods during the, during the, uh, summer season. Uh, also, um, uh, we have highlighted the number of coach tours and caravans coming in. We're a little bit, uh, the caravan number is, uh, is sixteen, but we are down slightly with the number of, uh, folks that are participating in those caravans. And our coach, uh, tours are at twenty-eight, but ten of those are staying overnight. And Kelty works very diligently to contact all of those, uh, coach tours to ensure that, uh, she pitches Dawson Creek to them. It's very hard to sway their itineraries, but provides a step-on guide service for, for those that are just passing through the community or staying overnight. And of course welcomes the, uh, caravans with the highway howdy. Uh, the big, um, we've, uh, we're thrilled with the, um, to, with regard to the, um, seventieth anniversary, the motor vehicle convoy. Um, we are thrilled with, uh, TriMac Transportation's sponsorship of five thousand dollars for the breakfast and the barbecue. It's fantastic. This is, um, a major, uh, event with ninety-seven vehicles and then two-hundred-and-fifty people. So Kelty's been working very, uh, closely with the, um, the actual organizer for that, um, event. And I guess they let the, release the vehicles, twenty-five vehicles at a, at a time as they go up the highway. So it's quite something. And then they come back down at the end of the month.
What is the date of that?
It's, uh, the first, they come into town on the first. There's actually a Canadian contingent that comes in a couple of days earlier.
First of August?
Yeah, first of August, yeah. And then they, um, and then they, the official launch is the third, uh, and the, and then they take off, uh, up the highway on the fourth and then they return on the thirtieth of August. And so it was necessary to find them a, a compound in order to, uh, to actually house their vehicles, which was a bit of a, an effort. Um, just a few more important numbers, I think, is the, uh, the Lasting Memories Program. We see that, uh, the Rala Homecoming's expecting five hundred and the South Peace Secondary Reunion is four hundred. So we work very hard to keep those folks in the community. And, uh, the Alaska Highway House is on summer hours again. We're really looking forward to, uh, upping the numbers. It, uh, to perhaps, uh, over, uh, we had over six thousand last year, so you never know. We can make it more, uh, this coming season. And certainly lastly, um, and, um, I, I guess one of the other points I should also mention is, uh, the, um, the iShare Program, uh, that the, uh, the visitor center is involved in gets the word out, uh, which is, um, actually organized by Northern BC Tourism, but gets the word out at provincial level for, uh, blogging contests, for blogging on the Hello BC website. And then at the, uh, northern, um, region level with communication with all the visitor centers, so that people know what's taking place in all the different communities. And at the local level, the development of the coupon book is, it really targets our local businesses. And last but not least, the findings report for the, uh, National Historic Sites Project should be released soon. So that will provide direction to, uh, Tourism Dawson Creek and your community as to how to support that particular effort. So we thank you once again. And we're certainly open to any questions.
Good. Councillor McFadden?
Morning, April. Thank you. Are you involved, uh, your group with, uh, operations of the, uh, I'll call it the gatehouse for a better word, at the, at the Pioneer Park? There's a bit of a museum as you go through?
Uh, no, we're not involved with that this year. In previous years, uh, Tourism Dawson Creek, uh, had a contract for a satellite visitor center, but that was not renewed this year. So we're, we're not there this year, although directing folks that way.
I, I understand.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Aside from I talked to Dustin on the weekend, he said to say hi to everybody.
I'm always talking to Dustin on Facebook.
A lot of Facebook, yeah.
He's always showing off the wonderful beaches in Australia.
He suggested that...
Asking how, how cold it is in Dawson.
Yeah. He suggested if we're looking for a sister city, he's, uh, got one there. If we want to make a trip down and say hi to him.
And welcome to...
Yes, so welcome Samantha.
Thank you. Welcome.
Sorry, councillor Kenny?
Hey, yeah, April, how, how are we making out with the designation for the National Historic Site?
Well, well, that is, um, the findings report, which has been compiled by Julie Harris of Content Works. And, uh, it, it's just in the final process of, uh, we're deciding on how it should be printed and bound. And then it will be presented to the Alaska Highway Community Society. Uh, but the, but the barriers and the opportunities are recognized within the report. It, it sounds very positive. Uh, so we're, we're really looking forward to, uh, to seeing that. And, and work is planned for the next couple of years. So it'll just ref- refine what that work will look like.
Good job. Thanks for doing that.
Mm-hmm. Thanks.
Good. Well, thank you very much again for coming in. Thanks for the updates and...
Thank you.
We're looking forward to the council, councillor to councillor, two different spellings.
Yes. Thank you very much.
So on that then, I believe we are done the open portion. So a motion to recess to the close. Councillor, before I go there, Tyra?
Can I just ask that, um, as part of the resolution, that you add item seven point three under the reason, section ninety, acquisition, disposition or expropriation of land. We had a late item out of the agenda on Friday, the closed agenda?
Yes.
But it wasn't added to the resolution.
It wasn't added to this resolution, okay, which we're aware of, but it wasn't on here. So thanks for catching that. Okay, so councillor Malcynson, seconded by councillor Kenny. All those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. So it's a five-minute recess before closed. Thank you, everyone.